Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. Welcome to the April 19th, 2023, a regular scheduled meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We ask you for wisdom for all of the board members here, Lord, every county commissioner, every person working, Lord, for the county in every position. We pray for protection over all of Hillsborough County and all of your people. And we pray also for every firefighter, every law enforcement, every person in our military, Lord, all of those that are serving, Lord, we just thank you. We ask you to protect their lives. And also, we pray a special prayer for Ms. Veronica Bermuda that lost her family in a fire right here in Hillsborough County, that she lost her husband, Angel Lopez, and her children, Angel Junior and Harmony. We ask you for special peace in their hearts, in their minds, peace over their family and their friends, in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. This is a special day for both the Board of County Commissioners and the people of Hillsborough County. It is our pleasure to present the Seventh Annual Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. Commissioner Cameron Sapata, would you please tell us about the award and recognize this year's outstanding recipient?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everybody. I'm deeply honored to present this award for the first time. In January 2017, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved the creation of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award to honor an individual or group dedicated to preserving the county's natural resources. The award is named in honor of the Twenty-Sixth President of the United States, known as the nation's first conservationist president. Theodore Roosevelt placed more than 200 million acres under public protection and doubled the number of sites in the national park system. It is in this spirit of conservation of our most precious environmental resources that we present this award today. I want to thank the members of the Jan K. Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program Committees who reviewed the nominations and recommended the recipient. I believe we have a few members with us here today. Please stand so we can recognize you. Jan Smith, Chair, Sally Thompson, Vice Chair, Ann Paul, past Conservation Award recipient, Joe Guidry, past Conservation Award recipient, and Peter Fowler and Joel Jackson. Thank you for your service and our heartfelt thanks to the other members who couldn't join us today. So just thank you for your service. Now, I'm proud to welcome the recipient of the 2023 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award, Mr. Rob Heath. Mr. Heath, would you please join me here at the podium? Good morning and welcome. Good morning and welcome. Thank you. A graduate of Amherst College and Tulane University with a bachelor's in biology and master's in environmental biology, respectively, Rob Heath has dedicated his life to protecting the environment and educating others about his importance. His accomplishments are extensive. He spent 14 years supervising natural land management for Hillsborough County in our outstanding ELAP program, helping it grow into the best initiative of its type in Florida. He has broad experience in land management, including habitat restoration prescribed burning, exotic species control, recreational development, and site security. In addition, he's an expert in environmental education and natural history interpretation, including development of displays and literature, layout and construction of nature trails and boardwalks, and interpretive programming. And in addition to his jobs, his vast work includes roles as a member volunteer and leader of various local boards and grassroots conservation organizations. Furthermore, Mr. Heath founded a nonprofit organization, Wildlife Fellowship Incorporated, for which he secured grants, coordinated volunteer projects, conducted public education campaigns, and participated in other public and private conservation activities. After three years as a park ranger with the Florida Park Service, Mr. Heath joined Hillsborough County as its environmental education coordinator. Using his amazing creativity, he developed educational displays, nature center exhibits, and interpretive literature for six new parks, including Lettuce Park, Lettuce Lake, and Upper Tampa Bay, among other duties. He then became the county's naturalist, responsible for continuing and expanding parks and recreations, environmental education programs, which included the highly successful Fun with Nature Summer Program for children. In the late 1980s, Hillsborough County took a gigantic step to preserve environmentally sensitive lands for future generations when voters approved ELAP, Lands for Future Generations. An outstanding leader, Mr. Heath played a major role in the development of this initiative and its ensuing tremendous success in his position as environmental supervisor from 1989 through 2002. In that role, he helped identify, acquire, and manage more than 35,000 acres of preservation lands acquired through ELAP, develop habitat restoration plans and public facilities, and educate the public about the importance of land preservation. After his retirement from the county, Mr. Heath has continued his mission. He has served as seasonal warden and Tampa Bay Spoonbill Technician for Audubon, Florida, observing, banding, and tracking the beautiful reserve Spoonbill. He also worked as senior ecologist and land manager for Wildlands Conservative Conservation Incorporated, which specializes in acquiring, managing, and restoring natural areas, in addition to leading his nonprofit, among other amazing work. Mr. Heath, your service, dedication, and advocacy embodies the spirit of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. As part of this award, we have a framed photo for you of an absolutely beautiful spot along the scenic Little Manatee River. In addition, a nice plaque is being made, and you will be awarded $2,000 courtesy of the county's late, great friend, Gus Munich, to fund and enhance enhancement project at a Hillsborough County nature area of your choice. Also, your name is just the seventh placed on a permanent plaque that hangs in a case here on the second floor of the county center. Thank you for all your amazing work.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words to anything? This one. It can have this one, too. Here you go. Take that one.
The little man in Cuba.
That was a picture of the Little Manatee. Thank you.
I don't know if I can keep from passing out after hearing all those things about myself that I didn't know about. Mr. Yobitron said I had to keep this under 30 minutes. My wife said 30 seconds, so I'm going to compromise and hit something in the middle. Growing up, I spent lots of time outdoors in nature, hunting, fishing, camping, and hiking. My dad wanted me to become a doctor like him, but I knew that I wanted a career working in the natural environment. My wife and Allison, here in the front row, and I chose to move to Florida in 1978, soon after we got married. Me because of the incredible natural diversity and Allison because of the warm climate. My first job was as a Florida Park Ranger. Then after three years, Joel Jackson recruited me to work as an environmental education specialist in the Park Bond Program. That decision was easy. Joel told me about a couple of the resource-based parks that were being developed, and I drove out to the future site of Lettuce Lake Park on the Hillsborough River. And then I drove out to Courtney Campbell Causeway and launched a canoe and paddled across Old Tampa Bay and hiked around on the Upper Tampa Bay Tract. And it was a no-brainer. Plus, the pay was better. Over the next 20-plus years, things kept getting more interesting, challenging, and rewarding. Not only did I get to be a part of the largest county land preservation program in Florida and possibly the United States, but I also got to work with an incredible group of individuals who shared my commitment to land conservation, a number of whom are here today. It's impossible to start naming people without accidentally leaving some out, but I have an excuse now since I just turned 70 earlier this year. I'll keep the list short by focusing on some key players who were responsible for getting the ELAP program going in the early years. I'd like to thank Joel Jackson, of course, first and foremost, also Pete Fowler, Sally Thompson, Jan S. Platt, Ed Tranchik, Pam Ario, and Fred Carl, all very strong supporters of the program in its critical early years. Additionally, members of all the ELAP volunteer committees, my former coworkers, and members of all the local conservation organizations, including Audubon, Sierra Club, the Native Plant Society, the Nature Conservancy, Tampa Bay Conservancy, the Trust for Public Land, Wildlands Conservation, and more. Some of them are here with me today, including William Lorenzen, Dave Sumter, Renee, and Mark Rochal with Audubon. Eventually, I found myself drawn away from this wonderful community by responsibility even greater -- excuse me. It's Donald Trump. He's making me cry. Responsibility even greater than land management, and that was my family. Five years ago, Allison and I relocated to Virginia to be closer to her parents, both now living in their 90s and living independently. So now we are living in the foothills of the Blue Ridge Mountains in our log cabin, surrounded by and enjoying nature. Visitors are welcome. In closing, I'd like to say again, thanks to everyone for this wonderful honor. Now, as my former staff can tell you, I could never resist throwing in a Star Trek reference. So I say to you all, live long and prosper.
Your service -- excuse me, Mr. Heath. Your service has made a lasting impact on our community, and we are really proud to honor you today. And I would just like to ask my fellow commissioners if you would -- anyone would like to have anything to say?
Mr. Kemp.
I'll just say thank you so much for your service and for -- actually, we have an audience today that comes once a year, I think, and so many in this group are -- have just done an incredible job for conservation and protection of the environment and the building and preserving of our lands. And so, thank you so much for everything you've brought to us and for everyone here today, too, that has worked so hard in our conservation programs. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Heath, would you like to take a picture with the other commissioners? And if you have anyone here that you would like to be in the photo as well?
The guys that I mentioned.
Okay. And also, ELAP committee members and conservation environmental lands management representatives, if you would like to join us in photo also?
All right. One, two, three.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata, and congratulations once again, Mr. Heath. We'll now proceed to our next two special recognitions, and I'll present the first one. For the past, I think it's been 16 years or so, I've been very proud to present this proclamation declaring Crime Victims Rights Week. Would the following individuals from the State Attorney's Office for the 13th Judicial Circuit please join me at the podium? State Attorney Susan Lopez, Senior Supervisor Stella Carbine, and Victim Counselor Joe Carroll Good morning, and thank you for joining us here today. Hillsborough County and its community partners are dedicated to protecting the rights of individuals who fall victim to crime. One such partner is the State Attorney's Office for the 13th Judicial Circuit of Florida, which is instrumental in helping crime victims recover and heal through its Victims Assistance Program, which was established in 1986 via an interlocal agreement with the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners and the State Attorney's Office. Counselors and specialists of the Victims Assistance Program assist crime victims from when an offender is arrested throughout the criminal justice process and even post-conviction. It is with great admiration and appreciation that I present the following proclamation, which recognizes the hard work and efforts of the Victims Assistance Program and the State Attorney's Office for the 13th Judicial Circuit. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Americans fall victim to more than 20 million crimes each year, disrupting lives regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or economic status; and whereas years ago, crime victims had poorly defined rights, little access to crime victim compensation, and few services to help rebuild their lives; and the psychological, physical, and financial devastation resulting from violence continues to stare -- to tear at the fabric of American society; and whereas the voices of this nation's victims have changed laws, policies, and attitudes to promote victims' rights and services and encourage every person to take a stand for victims and help them recover. And whereas Crime Victims Rights Week theme Survivor Voices Elevate, Engage, Effect Change calls upon communities to be attentive to the voices of survivors and create environments where survivors will be heard, believed, and supported. Whereas Hillsborough County is committed to elevating and engaging survivors to lift their voices and forming policy and practice in effecting change, ensuring that responses and services to victims and survivors are reliable, meaningful, and unique to their individual's needs. And whereas Hillsborough County partners with law enforcement, courts, juvenile justice agencies, victim services, and the private sector to ensure that victims of crime are treated with the dignity and respect they deserve. And whereas the State Attorney's Office for the 13th Judicial Circuit of Florida is committed to helping victims recover through its Victims Assistance Program, which is free and available to victims of crimes committed in Hillsborough County. And whereas Hillsborough County applauds the Victim Assistance Program, providing exemplary services to Hillsborough County residents and visitors, which sets this community apart as a caring place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, is hereby declare April 23rd through April 29th, 2023, as Crime Victims Rights Week in Hillsborough County, in celebration of victims and their advocates' voices as an important chorus for fairness and dignity executed this 19th day of April 2023. And it's my privilege and honor to once again present this proclamation." Please say a few words.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Governor, it's nice to be here with members of our Victims Assistance Team, and I just want to recognize one special member of our team. It was 25 years ago today that Joe Carroll Byrd, who is standing -- she's horrified right now, I'm sorry -- first began her journey as a victim advocate at the Hillsborough County State Attorney's Office. She is an invaluable member of our team, and this county is better served for Joe Carroll having been a member of our Victims Assistance Team. We work hard every day to support victims, and we will especially honor them during National Crime Victims Rights Week, which is starting on April 23rd. Thank you all very much.
Well, good morning, everybody. It's a great day in Hillsborough County, isn't it? This is an extremely special proclamation to me. It's very, very personal to me. This proclamation is declaring April 19th, 2023, as Bertha and Tony Saladino and Family Tournament Celebration Day in Hillsborough County, Florida. So let me first start off by taking you back way back in my life. My parents moved to the Brandon area. It was just a little cow town. They wanted to live out in the middle of nowhere in 1975. A lot of people think that I know Coach Saladino through baseball. That's not true. Baseball is obviously a very key thing in both our lives, but I know the family because God blessed me to be his neighbor when I was -- Misty Saladino is here today. She used to babysit me, as a matter of fact. Tiger's here, him and my brother, who's here today. They used to torture me on Malibu Lane and Crystal Lane, but times have changed. They're much smaller than me, and I'm much bigger. But growing up in Brandon, you know, it was a magical place to grow up, and baseball was the key theme to everything. I lived at the baseball field. My whole world revolved around South Brandon Little League, and hopefully, one day, I prayed that I would have the opportunity to play in the Bertha and Tony Saladino Tournament. I got to do that and fortunately made the all-tournament team, right, Coach? And there's something that we need to settle here today, too, as well, and Bonnie, I hope that once we resolve this today, this can be put like on a future item. The chairman was a baseball player, too. And Coach Saladino, I'm hoping when you're up here today, you'll settle who the better baseball player was between me and the chairman.
And I welcome that discussion.
But all jokes aside, the chairman will agree with me on what I'm about to say. This tournament, this game, is so much more than just a game. Baseball's played between pitches. It's a game of life. I see Coach McAlusa here, obviously the governor, and listen, a lot of you have been fathers to young men who had fathers or didn't have fathers, and I know you're still like that today. Coach McAlusa, I played against you, but you're still someone that I always looked up to, even though I was on the team, I think the winning team more than the losing team, but you're just someone that with great integrity, that, like I said, is a father to so many people in this community. The tournament builds leaders. Sure, we can talk about scholarships all day long. We can talk about the endless professional baseball players that have come through Hillsborough County, but what this tournament does more than anything, it builds leaders, it builds teamwork. And this is the best high school baseball tournament in the state, and I'm sure Coach Saladino, I don't want to steal his thunder, I'll tell you why. But one of the main things we always want to do when we're talking about the Saladino Tournament, which is just known as the Saladino, is we want to always honor Bertha Saladino. She was the first lady of baseball, the hospitality hostess extraordinaire, and someone, to me, that was just very personal and very important to me. A lady that every day we miss, but her impact on young men and now old men lasts through the ages. So, Coach, I know we miss Bertha every single day, but her memory lives on through you and Tiger, for you continuing this tournament. Tony Saladino here today is keeping this tournament alive. It's changed a lot since 1981. It was 11 teams, I think, to start. I don't know how many high schools are playing it now, Coach, but when I played, Coach Mac, it was over at King High School, and I loved it. We had the tent there and everything, but now there are just so many high schools in Hillsborough County that we play at multiple locations. But it's a testament to show how long this tournament has lasted since 1981. So I want to thank you. My favorite quote is from James Earl Jones in Field of Dreams. It says, "The one constant through the years has been baseball. America has rolled by like an army of steamrollers. It's been erased like a chalkboard, rebuilt and erased again, but baseball, baseball has marked the times. It reminds us of our past, and it reminds us all that was once good and all that once could be again." So I want to thank you all. I want to thank you, Coach Saladino, for all you have done for me personally and for every young man in high school sports. And I'm going to have you come up front in a minute, but first, I want to introduce some people that I really look up to. Obviously, I was just talking about Coach McAlusa. Would you come forward, Coach Mac, real quick? Coach Mac has been at King High School for over 47 years. So the high school baseball field is named after Coach McAlusa, and just a man that I really look up to. I know he wants to say a couple of words about Tony and Bertha real quick. Coach.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Yes, I could go on and on about this tournament and what it's meant to Hillsborough County youth. I run into people like today, and it comes up that, hey, I played in it, I lived there the whole week, whatever. It's just tremendous. Bertha and Tony and the family did such a tremendous job of hosting this and keeping it going. But again, in this day and time, especially where youth have so many bad opportunities to find the wrong avenue, for a week, we know where they're at. They're playing baseball, and that's tremendous. It means so much to the parents. But on behalf of all the baseball coaches and all the kids that have come through the tournament, Tony, I'd like to thank you, Bertha, and the family for hosting this, and what a great job. Thank you very much.
All right, is Coach Urso here? I don't think he's here, right, Tony? The next person I want to introduce really doesn't need an introduction. He was born and raised in Tampa, attended Jefferson High School and the University of Tampa. He was an educator in our public schools. He was the mayor of Tampa, and he was notably known as the 40th governor of the great state of Florida. He also served as the director of the Office of National Drug Control Policy appointed by George H. W. Bush, President of the United States. It's my honor to introduce you to the Honorable Bob Martinez.
Commissioner, thank you very much. I'm trying to reduce 72 years to just a few moments. I've known Tony for some 72 years at Thomas Jefferson High School. We played on the basketball team and baseball team together. So we've gone back a very long time, and to this day, we have lunch together periodically and talk about old times. There aren't many of us left, frankly, that played ball together. There's only a handful of us, and about four months ago, we rounded up those who were still mobile and had a great lunch at the Columbia Restaurant. And so we try to stay in touch, but I want to approach Tony from a different point of view. You know, our commissioner pointed out all he's done with baseball, but I think the important thing about Tony is what he's done for life, for people. He and Bertha, inseparable, one and only. He now serves as chairman of the board of the Saladino family. The children and the grandchildren do the work to keep that tournament going, but he has a history. He chairs it. He's a board member. When you consider what he's done with this tournament, not a person of wealth, one of dedication, one who not only taught, but also was a staff person with the Hillsborough County Parks and Recreation Program as well. Not only did he get involved with students as athletes, but as students as people, which is even more important for the guidance of young people. Tony's always been that way. And like I said, we go back a long way. In fact, our mothers worked together at Melzone Sports Garment Factory. That's how far back. That's how far back. But one of the things I remember about this tournament, he has something called the Old Timers Lunch. Where on I think it was on a Wednesday, Bertha put out a tremendous meal for all the old timers that showed up and some of the scouts, because the scouts follow this tournament very much so in terms of finding talent for the future. And it was a great time. We were there a couple of hours. Everybody's lying about how good they were in the past. And of course, there aren't many left, so there's not much to lie about anymore. But that was the kind of thing that I remember about Tony, that he doesn't forget who he knew. He doesn't forget where he came from and is always creating a path for those who are to follow. The tournament was his instrument to give young people an opportunity to show their skills and some of them, quite frankly, made it all the way to the big time. And I'm sure the tournament had a lot to do with it, with scouts being present for recruitment purposes. So with Tony, he was an institution. Bertha was an institution. The tournament's an institution. The entire family is an institution. God bless all of you.
Thank you, Governor. So well said. And to back that up, when I was my senior year of high school, a scout, a college scout had come to watch the tournament and I earned a scholarship, baseball scholarship, based on my performance in that tournament. So Governor, you're absolutely right. But again, like you said as well, this builds more than just about scholarships and major leaguers. It builds character and at the very top of that has been Bertha and Tony Saladino. Well, the family, the Saladinos, they grow on trees. Would you guys just stand up real quick? Give them a hand. And this is not a representation of all of them, but sometimes water is thicker than blood and these people are family to me and I just thank you for all you've done to support Tony and Bertha because, you know, it's the only place where you'll go into a bathroom and you'll unroll the toilet paper and it please take you out to the ballgame. Thank you, guys. Okay, the next person I want to introduce is is the man of the hour. Coach, I just thank you for all that you've done for me, everybody that's come through high school sports. Ladies and gentlemen, Tony Saladino.
I may repeat some things that have been said with previous speakers, but my back store neighbor, I was taller than him when he was six years old. And my wife fed us the same meals. Look where he went and look where I'm at. He was a good neighbor and a good baseball player and he better be a good commissioner or get on him. And as far as the best player between you and Commissioner Hagan, the governor was better than both of you. My family and I accept this emotional and heartwarming tribute and proclamation in memory of my father, Tony, and my wife, Bertha, who was my biggest inspiration and support through the years. She was she started the tournament. It was her idea. So she became the matriarch and backbone of the tournament, my life, my careers, and my family. And my family already stood up, but I'd like to recognize them individually. My son, Tony, his wife, Cheryl, my daughter, Misty, her husband, Todd, and our longtime family friend, Lois Ruth, is over here on this side. They so far have kept the tournament going. So far, they're taking care of me, especially the last seven years. Governor Martinez named Bertha the First Lady of Baseball and she did that and much She did so much for so many through the years, not only in baseball, but in life. And there are so many others to be thanked for the success of the 42-year-old tournament. The list is too long to mention, but we thank them, we appreciate it, and we seek their continued support. So I'll close with our 42-year-old tournament goal. Make friends, make memories, and make caring and responsible citizens and law-abiding citizens, one inning at a time. Thank you very much. I want to thank Commissioner Owen, all the Commissioners, William Yelverton. It's been great being here with you all today and thank you for the honor.
And I'm not going to read the proclamation, but basically what it does is today is Tony Saladino, Bertha and Tony Saladino and family day, April 19th. It talks about Jesuit, who actually won the tournament, most recent winner of the tournament as well. And but it sets today as the official day for the Tony and Bertha Saladino Tournament. So here you go. And I know I know that the chairman, he's going to want to have to say a few words here. I see the red light on, so go ahead, Chairman.
Well, first of all, thank you, Commissioner Owen, for for recognizing this very special man. Tony, I think with the worldview, you've always been incredibly kind to me. Memory like no one that I I know. He can tell you each year who was on the All-Tournament Team, what year, who they played for. It speaks volumes when you have folks such as Governor Martinez and Coach McAlusa who's here. And Coach Mac is a legend in Hillsborough County baseball here. So it just speaks volume to the kind of man that you are, Tony. As Commissioner Owen said, this tournament is the very best tournament in the state played by the best baseball players in the country, not only in the state, but in the country. This tournament provides an opportunity to showcase your skills. Many go on to play to play in college, such as Commissioner Owen and myself. Many go on to the professional ranks. But beyond that, it does teach character, integrity, leadership, some of life's greatest lessons, you know, I learned on this tournament, which again goes far and beyond just playing baseball and having fun. Again, when I played back then, a little older than Commissioner Owen, we played at King High School, but it shows you how the tournament has grown exponentially. So we have to play at multiple locations now. Like Commissioner Owen, I did make the All-Tournament Team. I will point out, it was over someone that most people in this room have heard of, that's Tino Martinez, there, Commissioner Owen. But I will say, I do know that Governor Martinez had 11 RBIs in one game. So I agree with with Tony that he's definitely the best baseball player in this room right here. But Tony, it's so great to see you again. Just keep going strong, buddy.
Can I?
And Commissioner Kemp.
I just wanted to, that's okay. It's it's not exactly my world that I've been delved into, but I just wanted to say thank you so much for sharing the memories of your wife, Bertha, and her part in building this, that you collaborated as a family and remembering her and her role in that. Thank you for sharing that.
Come in. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, we'll do a picture up front here.
Okay, Bonnie, I want to review the changes to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a few revisions or corrections to the agenda. First, item F2, which is Commissioner Owen's item, will be heard at 10:15 to approve an honorary roadway designation for Kensington James Road on County Road 39. Item B3, a 10:30, will now be 10:30 instead of 10:15. Review and appeal of the hearing master's decision regarding a protest of procurement for waste transfer services for the Solid Waste Management Division. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion. This will be heard at the end of the agenda by Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. This is item A4. This is to approve the Community Development Grant Block Grant Funding Agreement between Hillsborough County and enterprising Latinas for public facility improvements to the property. We have several items for time certain. At 10 o'clock, item D1, this is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendment to the program year 21 Home ARP Allocation Plan and accept public comments for the Submental to HUD. At 10:00 a.m. as well, item D2, this is to hold the first public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance declaring zoning in progress and providing for a temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops within 500 feet of any public or private school. At 10:15, item F2, Commissioner Owen's item, to approve an honorary roadway designation for Kensington James Road on County Road 39. At 10:30, item B3 is to review and appeal of the House Hearing Master's Decision regarding a protest of a procurement for waste transfer services for the Solid Waste Management Division. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion for the changes.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second, Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote. All right, we're going to the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, there's requests at the same time when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally against a Commissioner or staff member, but rather the issues. The Board has set aside 45-minute period in the morning for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may hear public comments at the end of the meeting. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which their requests to speak have been received. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Each person is allotted three minutes. We have 26 people that have signed up this morning, 15 on the agenda and 11 off the agenda. I can tell you right now, it's highly unlikely we'll get to everyone here, but we'll do it the best that we can. First three speakers this morning, Kathleen, or before we speak, I know Commissioner Owen wanted to make a brief comment.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know so many friends and families are here for Kensington James Winchester. First, thank you all for being here today. It's such an honor to have you all here. I wanted to just first, as these public comments come around, because time is limited, just to make sure that in some cases, you may have one particular person that speaks for a few. Sometimes that's great. And just note that the I have really good news on the road itself as far as the improvements that are going to be made. So so if keep that in mind that at 10:15, when that time comes around, there's going to be good news as to the road. The item is actually about naming the honorary road designation. So I know it's a very easy thing for you all to do is just to talk about how important and how how great of a life she she lived in her short time. So just wanted to say that just in case, just because of time sensitive.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Owen. The first three speakers are Kathleen Gregory, then Elizabeth Tansky, and Katie Copeland. Good morning.
Everybody. Didn't know I was going to go first, but one thing.
And please state your name.
Kathleen Gregory. I am Kensington's grandmother. Cassandra is my daughter and Caleb is my son-in-law. And we had the tragic loss of our granddaughter, of my granddaughter, a month ago today. And it was at that intersection and they live less than a mile away. We were able to go ahead and honor my father a couple of months ago. You know, he was buried at Arlington. We have a memory and he was he was justified in his death. With Kensington, I think she deserves a little bit, something special, too. They have to go by and they have to pass that area every day. He works for UPS. He has to drive that around the corner from his house and see where his daughter was murdered. If there could be something special that could be there to honor her and, you know, and give the respect to her, it would be most appreciated with all of our family. You mentioned the Saladinos. The Saladinos have been wonderful supporters. They have even been, I was a military brat. I didn't get the pleasure of growing up here, but my children have. You know, for the community to come together and do something and remember her, that's the utmost importance that's in our heart right now. You know, it's a tragic loss. Ultimately, the guy that drove the car would probably be the most responsible, but there's other factors that we'd go into later. But, you know, just really, if you could consider her, you know, and a family, it's very hard. It's very, very hard. No one should ever have to bury a five-month-old baby in such a tragic situation. But I do appreciate you, you know, working with the family and helping out and trying to ease some of the pain that our family is going through. So respectfully request that you could pass her being remembered and honored. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Very sorry for your loss. Elizabeth Tansky and then Katie Copeland. Good morning.
My name's Elizabeth Tansky. I want to start off by thanking County Commissioner Mike Owen for having us and making Kensington's story a mission for change in his community to ensure this nightmare is no one else's reality. In February of 2022, we found out our best friends were expecting their first child after many complications with infertility. In April of 2022, we found out that she was expecting she was expecting the first little princess in our group of wild and crazy boys. Up until Kensington's birth, we watched Cassandra and Caleb tirelessly plan and research the safest and most efficient way to bring their baby girl into this world, from a new and bigger car to the top-of-the-line car seats, breathing monitors, et cetera. You name it, Cassandra researched it, even going the lengths of submitting a request of her very own with the county about this very intersection years before she started her own family and how dangerous it is and could potentially be, as the Winchesters only live .8 miles from it. In October 2022, Cassandra and Caleb brought Kenzie into this world and little did they know that they would spend the short-lived months of Kenzie's life staying home on holiday nights to stay away from drunk drivers, staying home to avoid possible flu and RSV illnesses, and spending countless nights doing breathing checks while she slept. Little did they know that they would do everything in this world to keep their baby girl safe, only for the county to ignore them and many other concerns and complaints about this terrible intersection for years prior. Little did they know it'd be the same intersection that has now claimed the life of their baby girl. They did their part to keep their baby girl safe and the county did not. The county failed them and the county failed Kensington and it's time to make a change before the county fails someone else's baby, before the county fails one of our own boys that we travel through with that travel through that intersection with time and time again. Do the right thing, make a change, and listen to the community. Do your research and do it in honor of Kensington James Winchester. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tansky. Katie Copeland followed by Cassandra Winchester and then Chelsea Finimore. Chelsea Fenimore. Good morning.
Good morning. I want to start off by saying that we shouldn't be here today, asking for consideration of this extremely dangerous intersection to have the appropriate measure taken to prevent another tragedy from happening. Over the 20 years that I've lived off of County Road 39, I can't even begin to tell you the changes that have taken over the area from what it used to be. Orange groves being taken down to build more homes, cow pastures and property being bought to build more schools, all of this bringing more traffic to the area. But one thing that stayed the same is the changes this intersection has needed for years. And unfortunately, the danger of this specific intersection took the life of an innocent five-month-old, which just so happens to be the daughter of my best friend's. .7 miles, less than one mile, that's how far they were from being home safe with their daughter. Can you imagine? All I can think, continue to think is, what if, what if the changes that have been requested over the years took place? Would we even be here discussing this? Cassandra would be at home with her now six-month-old Kensington James while daddy was at work providing for his family, not here asking for changes to be made. Kensington deserves better. Cassandra and Caleb absolutely deserve better. They deserve to watch their daughter grow and experience all of the milestones. Please make a change, save a life, and honor Kensington James. Honor her name.
Thank you, Ms. Copeland. Cassandra Winchester, then Chelsea Fenimore. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Cassandra Winchester, and this is my daughter Kensington, who's taken from us in an accident on the night of March 19th at the intersection of County Road 39 and 672. From looking at me and just a picture of my baby girl, I really don't think I need to say anything more about how dangerous this intersection is and how immediate action should be taken place to ensure that no other family has to go through such tragic loss. What started as a great day ended in tragedy. Never in a million years would I think that that would have been our last moments together. I decided to sit in the backseat with her that night and held her hand the whole way home until we were struck by a driver who flew through the stop sign, impacting directly on my five-month-old baby girl's side. We were just innocently driving home, like you've heard already, less than a mile away from our house, where she would have been safe. But all that changed in a matter of a second. Our whole world changed, and we have to continue to pass that intersection and that spot every time we leave the house. Years ago, I sent a message to someone in the county about adding a flashing stop sign, warning signs, like I had seen driving home down some other backroads in Manatee County one night. Maybe flashing arrows to help with curves and turns, which would even benefit the other side of 672 by Baum River View, but that is for another day. Today is about the intersection that took my baby away from me. Any one of you can sit at this intersection, just like County Commissioner Mike Owens did, and witness yourself, the cars blowing through the stop sign or near collision every time. I had recently made a call to Hillsborough County Non-Emergency Line about having an officer sit on Thatcher Road on the other side of that intersection. Maybe just a police presence would change something, but yet I have to see one. I believe part of the issue causing this recent influx in accidents in this intersection alone is the overpopulation of homes in the area. The amount of neighborhoods being developed on 672 is outrageous, and doubling that number, as each household statistically has at least two vehicles, just creates chaos. This area isn't as rural or country as it used to be. It's now being used more and more every day to cut through for people coming in to and from work. When we first moved there seven years ago, we had dreams about our family living out in the country. I'm sorry. You would only see one to two cars on your drive, but it's not like that anymore. The following weekend that I was released from the hospital, we had her funeral. On the way to visit the cemetery, we were almost hit by a driver passing others, coming at us head-on, just a couple days after I was released from the hospital.
Give me another 30 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'm skipping. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, the damage is already done for my family. We have already suffered the greatest loss we could ever imagine in the most tragic way. Myself, our family, and our friends are here to fight and prevent this from happening to anyone else in the future and to ensure no other family has to endure this painful loss. It could have been anyone else in this room that night, your son, daughter, brother, sister. Please put yourself in our shoes and those who travel these roads every day into consideration. This is why I support County Commissioner Mike Owens and his determination to fix this intersection and his suggestion to designate the road after my sweet Kensington. Because of her, we are all here today, fighting for more safety precautions, which I know will save other lives. The fight is not over the center section, but we will continue to fight against distracted drivers and making sure the roadways and more safety precautions are in place for my sweet Kensington. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winchester. Very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Chelsea Fenimore, and then Teresa Wolf. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mike Owen. My name is Chelsea Reynolds Fenimore. My husband and I, along with our two children, live off of Highway 674 in Lithia. My family has lived in this area for nearly 130 years. We drive on County Road 39 past the intersection of 672 multiple times a week. This intersection has needed changes for decades, and multiple members in my family can attest to that, as the traffic has grown immensely. The Winchester family on the night of March 19th endured what no family should have to, the loss of their five-month-old daughter. Not only did we, the family and friends, lose beloved Kensington, Cassandra, her mother, endured life-changing physical injuries. Both Caleb, her father, and Cassandra suffered physically from the accident, but the mental toll witnessing such horror will last them a lifetime. Cassandra has written emails to the county prior to this accident, requesting an increase in safety measures at this very intersection. The county should have heeded those warnings. The county had failed. Can you hear her now? We, the community, have come together to assist this family, and now it's the county's turn. You must do what's right and fix this. Better safety measures could prevent another family from suffering this devastating tragedy. I'm no expert in highway safety, but I know that rumble strips leading to the stop sign and better lighting at this intersection can make a difference. We should never be afraid to drive our roads, and we are afraid. This is not a request for a change. This is a demand. Make a change for Kensington. Her life was taken unjustly. Her parents are broken. Do not allow more suffering at this intersection. Honor Kensington's life. Honor her memory. Fix this. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Wolf, and then we have a few virtual speakers. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Prince Wolf. So what I'm here to say is superheroes come in all shapes and sizes, and today each of you has the opportunity to become a superhero. I'm here to speak on A13 regarding roadway safety and lighting. According to the National Census Bureau, between April 1st, 2020, and July 1st, 2021, Hillsborough County, Florida, grew by an astounding 3.7% versus the United States at a mere 0.2. This means your job here is very unique. As a daughter of a former county commissioner, I understand the demands of your position, and I don't take it lightly. It is time for you to put on your superhero cape and help make, help to prevent accidents like this due to the growth of Hillsborough County. I stand with the Winchester family today, grieving the loss of their beautiful baby girl Kensington James Winchester. I ask all of you to please help prevent this from happening again. Hillsborough County is growing. We have to change the roads at the same pace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. The next few speakers are virtual. Tricia Van Verenburgh, it looks like, Cassandra Coronado, and then Demetriya White. Is Tricia on the line?
Yes, I am.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tricia Van Verenburgh, and I would like to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this morning in regards to this horrible tragedy that took the life of our beautiful Kensington James. Highway 39 and 672 used to be backcountry roads. That is no longer the case. Hillsborough County is growing at an alarming rate. We have very few country roads left. The building of communities has far exceeded road improvements. Caleb and Cassandra Winchester had a beautiful, healthy, five-month-old baby girl, a baby girl that was taken from them because of a poorly lit and poorly marked intersection. Due to those conditions and a very careless driver, a life has been taken and a family shattered. Have you ever heard the guttural wailing of a mother who has lost her child? I have, and it's heartbreaking. It is, it's the most heartbreaking sound I have ever witnessed. We can't bring our beautiful Kensington back, but we can at least make everyone that crosses that intersection think of her and remember to take extra caution while driving. Baby Kensington James' memory will live on forever, and this is the least Hillsborough County can do for this shattered and heartbroken family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cassandra Coronado.
Chair, Cassandra did not check in online.
Okay. Demetriya White.
Hi, my name is Demetriya White. Please bear with me. I am, I along with a lot of people there, have been in this area for over 100 years. My grandfather was a boyette. There's a couple of roads out here, Boyett Road. I am, I realize there's a lot of issues here with these intersections, but the one we're dealing with is the one that took this baby's life. And the issue on the books is whether or not to honor her with a road sign. Well, I would say, why not? There are so many people at fault here, except for the ones involved. These parents did all the right things. They had baby seats. They had a safe place. They bought a house in the country to raise their child. Caleb, along with my kids, were born and raised running these backroads. They wanted away from the hustle and bustle. However, the traffic and the developments have caught up with us. I do not want to witness, I do not want to have to sit through another funeral and watch our babies burying babies. My grandson is 12 days older than Kensington. They were supposed to spend birthdays together. They were supposed to spend playdate together. They will not be doing this. However, if there is a road sign in honor of this baby erected and preferably under flashing lights and streetlights where everyone can see, one day I will share these stories with my grandson. I will let him know that although he does not have this beautiful little girl here to grow up with, that she has saved ultimate lives. That is my hope, that if we cannot have this baby, which we don't, their world has been shattered. Their world is broken. The chain is broken. Let's do something to honor this family, to honor this baby, and to make these roads safer for our kids and our grandkids. Thank you very much, and I am so sorry for your loss and for what this family is living.
Thank you, Ms. White. Tatiana Ori, virtual.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tatiana Ori. Cassandra Winchester, Kensington's mom. She's the nanny of our two boys for almost two years. For years before baby Kensington died in this tragic accident, Cassandra drove with our boys on a regular basis to her house, taking the exact same route on which eventually her baby girl was going to take her last breath. For our family, driving on that road to go visit Cassandra and Caleb after their loss, it is heartbreaking. It is hard to explain our youngest child why there is a cross on the side of the road with Kensington's name on it. Although this tragic accident cannot be reversed, there is so much that can be done by you to honor baby Kensington. Since Cassandra and other families living in the area sent multiple complaints over the last few years about the dangers of this road, nobody cares. Nobody has done anything to help prevent this tragedy. Kensington was let down by so many that vowed to keep our neighborhood safe. A few weeks after she died, another car accident happened at the exact same site. Baby Kensington's cross at the accident site, it is not enough to make irresponsible drivers pay attention. We honor so many heroes and well-known people, and we have deep respect and appreciation for their services and sacrifices. But what do we do about a five-month-old baby that had no opportunity to become one of these people? How will you honor her now that she is gone? You might not take her into consideration because she was not of statewide significance. Kensington wasn't a historical figure. She was not part of a local government where she could get her own roads. She was not a well-known person. She did not hold a principal function. She was just five months old. She was never even given a chance to be all these things and achieve everything she could have achieved. But I want you to know that Kensington did make a difference and that she is a hero. Her death shook the entire community. Her innocent death brought people together. Her death pushed and will continue to push for safer roads. Even if she never had a chance to say her first words, the world will be her voice. Her parents, our families, friends, neighbors, strangers, strangers will be her voice, and we will all go all the way to make sure that she's heard. You can make a difference. Honor Kensington. Use her name and her sacrifice to make a difference. Approve an honorary roadway designation for her on County Road 39 to serve as warning for other drivers of dangerous road conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Ori.
This is the road Cassandra and Caleb take to visit their daughter at the cemetery every day.
Next speaker is Iliana Centron. She's also virtual.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Iliana Centron, Deputy Director of Enterprising Latinas, a nonprofit organization focused on women's and community economic development based in Wyomama. Today, the A4 item on the B O C C agenda was removed for a second time in two months, after first being removed from the B O C C agenda for February 15th, 2023. We understand the county's prerogative to review its funding decisions, but our organization respectfully requests an opportunity to provide answers to any questions or concerns you may have about this funding agreement. Unfortunately, we have not received clear communications about the status of the agreement in two months. This City BG Public Facilities investment corresponds to a project that received recommendation for approval from your Affordable Housing Services Department in May 2022, following the City BG procurement process and HUD's federal guidelines, and which was approved by the B O C C as part of the program year 2022 Annual Action Plan in July 2022. Our organization has complied with the requirements of the public process to request these federal dollars to enhance our facilities to service the community, as it has complied with the terms of five previous contracts we have had with the county. We remain available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Centron.
This is Erica Miller. I was skipped.
Catherine Lamentia. Catherine Lamantia? I think she's in person. Is there Catherine here? The next speaker is Erica Miller.
Good morning. My name is Erica Miller, and I am really good friends with Kathleen Gregory that spoke first. And bear with me. My daughter is friends with Cassandra. I am a grandmother as well, and I have served in public education for 23 years, and I am around young children each and every day. Recently, I've been asked the question, if it were your granddaughter, and if it were my granddaughter, you would never see the end of my wrath. I don't have to speak too much about the intersection that everyone else has spoke about this morning, the numerous accidents, people barreling through that stop sign. But I am going to speak about that evening, that late that night, early in the morning, a month ago. I got the distressed phone call. It was devastating, and my heart ached for baby Kensington and Cassandra and Caleb. We can look at this intersection with two lights. We can look at it with the view of a beautiful country road leading out to the country. We can also look at it with the lens of what happened just a month ago. It is the county's job to keep our citizens safe. I can also look at it with the view of seeing Cassandra and a mother who wept when they had to close that tiny casket at her funeral. I would really appreciate it, and so would all the community, if we could have this road designation to the beautiful countryside to honor and as tribute to this beautiful little baby girl. I'm going to borrow some quick lines from the pastor at the funeral. The name Kensington, Kensington James. The pastor referred to it as the same letters as having grace. Kensington has 10 letters. That's double grace. James has five letters. That is grace. If we could have this road designation, we can have a beautiful name for this road, for this beautiful baby girl, and we know that this world needs a lot more grace. God bless and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Catherine?
Good morning. My name is Catherine Lamantia. I am standing here on behalf of Kensington James Winchester to bring attention and awareness to you all. Due to the negligence and avoidance of requests that the county has received from multiple members of the community, including one sent in by our best friend, Cassandra Winchester, her, her husband's, family and friends' lives have forever changed. We should not have to be standing up here today to speak to you all to ask for a designation of a road, a blinking stoplight, a rumble strip, or a better lit area at the intersection. This community is forever growing, and the rural areas we grew up in are becoming overpopulated with people and the, excuse me, proper infrastructure and traffic signals are not being placed. Proper traffic signals may have grabbed the attention of the distracted driver that night on March 19 at the intersection of Highway 672 and Highway 39. I pray, and I pray that you listen to myself and all of the others here speaking on behalf of Kensington James Winchester. I pray you honor her and fix the intersection. I pray that you never let her name be forgotten, because she is an angel. She is our angel. Her smile was infectious. Her glow and presence that she brought to her mom and dad and so many others will not only get to be seen in pictures. She deserves so much more in this world than the negligence of the county and the driver that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last two speakers are Ryan Baker in person and Ryan Gill. Good morning.
Hello. My name is Ryan Baker. I've been a resident of Hillsborough County my entire life and now proudly serve this community working for Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. I was on shift the night of the accident and heard the call go out over the radio involving a five-month-old. Unknowingly, my coworkers and I talked about how long the response time was as we listened to the radio. When my wife called me in the morning crying, I immediately hurt far friends and felt guilt at what had happened. I've known the Winchesters through so many parts of my life, and this is never anything you want to hear. As a firefighter, I spend the majority of my shifts on the south end of the county, where I also live and witness the abundant amount of growth. It is overwhelming not only for residents but for first responders. In this unfortunate situation, it took first responders over 20 minutes to arrive unseen because of the lack of stations, units, and personnel in the south end of the county. As others have stated, the traffic in this area has grown so much that the intersection of 39 and 672 is no longer considered backroads. Residents outside of the area are unaware of how dangerous the traffic coming from both directions can be, especially if you are a distracted and careless driver. The absolute least we can do as a county is add rumble strips and flashing lights, if not completely active stoplight, to prevent this from ever happening again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Gill. I have, my family's lived in southeast Hillsborough County for well over 140 years. We live on our Century Pioneer Farm down there. First and foremost, thoughts and prayers to the Winchester family this morning, and we're just thinking about y'all and praying for y'all. Secondly, I would like to thank Commissioner Owen and his steadfast commitment to implementing some safety measures at this most dangerous intersection. I would also like to ask you, the county commission, to look at doing a comprehensive road safety assessment for the rural areas in southern Hillsborough County. Unfortunately, we have just rubber stamped a lot of developments, and our rural roads are now overgrown and overpopulated with traffic that they were never designed for and that they have not seen before. We find that a lot of the roadways are now being used as back entrances into the new communities that are being built, and it has made them very dangerous. And so that's why I come here today to ask y'all to take a very good, comprehensive look at some of the road safety features throughout our southern part of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. That's the last speaker for on-the-agenda items. We have a couple more minutes for off-the-agenda. Brooke Ward, in person. Good morning.
Good morning. I want to start by also giving my condolences to the Winchester family and supporting their request for something at that light. Good morning. My name is Brooke Ward. I'm the Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch and Food and Water Action, representing 5,437 Hillsborough County residents. I want to start by thanking you for taking the first step last week in fighting TECO rate hikes, and we hope to hear back from the Florida Public Service Commission soon. Over the last couple of weeks, we've received countless calls from the media and Hillsborough families who are excited about the county taking this first step. However, I'm here today to talk about the next steps that this commission can take to fight TECO rate hikes. At the April 5 meeting, this board voted unanimously to have the county attorney identify other steps that the county can take to fight TECO rate hikes. And we hope that there will be a public meeting scheduled soon to report back on her findings, and we look forward to working with Ms. Beck to turn those steps into public policy. There are also some next steps that you can start taking now. We need you, the Hillsborough County Commission, to fight TECO rate hikes with us. You can do this by fighting TECO rate hikes at the PSC hearings and passing county policies that will protect families from excessive energy burden. As one of TECO's largest customers and one of the largest counties in Florida, representing nearly 1.5 million people and nearly all of TECO's customers, your opinion really matters. The county's involvement helps to provide a unified voice with the people, increasing our collective influence. The county can intervene in these hearings as an interested party. The county can also pass comprehensive policies to ensure that the energy utilities are making rate lowering decisions, like phasing out costly fossil fuels, bettering efficiency standards, and investments in resiliency projects that will help to protect our pocketbooks and our environment. Thank you again so much for taking the first step in sending this letter. Now join us in fighting TECO rate hikes together. We would love to meet with each of you individually to discuss these next steps, and we thank Commissioners Kemp and Cameron Sepeda, who have already taken us up on meeting on those issues. Thank you, and have a beautiful rest of your day.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. David Sinclair, virtual?
Good morning. Can you hear?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. This is David Sinclair. I live on 84th, 34th, Pebble Circle, Tampa, and the State Director of MULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens. I first want to give my condolences to the Winchester family. I want to thank all of the Commissioners present for your courageous vote recently to contact the Florida Public Service Commission
Excuse me.
to consider bringing future
Will you get better audio?
Can anyone in Communications approve his audio? IT?
Yes, can you hear me?
It's difficult, but we can hear you, but it's not the clearest in the world.
Start again?
Yes, sir.
Yes, David Sinclair with MULAC, Latin American Citizens.
Sir, you're underwater. We're unable to hear you clearly.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Sinclair, are you able to move closer to your microphone?
I have it right about two inches from mouth, sir.
All right, we can hear you now. Please proceed.
I want to thank the commission for your courageous action to want to contact the Florida Public Service Commission to bring the customer service hearings closer to us. You responded recently to what in popular speech is "show me how democracy works." You responded. I congratulate you. Now, recently, when the public spoke and asked you to speak on their behalf, you showed the collective grit that you're capable of, and I thank you for protecting us from the corporate greed and the greed that recently they were trying to do to show that utility rate hikes made sense, and they do not. And I thank you all for having spoken on our behalf and protecting us. So today, we're here to, yes, again, to show you that we are behind you and that also you are with us. You are here to protect us, to give us an energy future. You are supporting us, the public, because we want a smart energy future that is based on very fair energy costs, an energy future that is fossil fuel not dependent, but without fossil fuel disruptions. You are our voice, and we thank you because we know that clean renewable energy sources is what is good for our community. So again, thank you all for showing us how democracy works. Thank you for supporting the community, because we know that we can move forward for a clean energy future. Give us the opportunity to sit down with you and dialogue. I thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Last speaker this morning will be David Coleman. Good morning.
Disrupt the ability for the community to come here and speak. And regarding the loss of life on the highways, two years ago, the statistics were that 273 people died on our highways in Hillsborough County, and there were 7,300 hit-and-runs. On my street alone four years ago, three teenagers died in the course of two days. One, Josiah Penner, was hit by a cop doing 66 miles an hour. Absolute impunity. There aren't enough police enforcement, according to the FDOT, to arrest everybody or to enforce existing laws. The idea of, I'm going into a road speech now, but I kind of have to. Redesigning roads is the FDOT's plan. It's also Hillsborough County's plan. I've been screaming just simply, "Lower the limits." Joe Citro has said, "Just lower the limits." And just recently in the news, I saw what you did. Just, the county is beginning to do that. I'd like to know more about what roads that's happening on. We need to lower limits and make Hillsborough County safer for all of our residents. The roads are insane. Those numbers are unacceptable. This is the unsafest county in the country as far as our lives go. But thank you for sending the letter, the letter the community needs to keep pressure on a bad player that is harmful to it. The county in many ways supports TECO. October 18, the Planning Commission will have its Excellence in Planning Awards sponsored by TECO. April 22, TECO is the major sponsor of EcoFest at Mozy. It's unacceptable that we're supporting such a bad player. Going back in history, some statistics here from the 2015 thesis that was, I thought she was an environmentalist. She is a criminologist. TECO had been given $87.7 million in government contracts from 2000 to 2015, yet TECO for decades has been awarded rate hikes to cover expenses incurred for crimes they've committed. It seems we go out of our way to reward them. Is this board pleased to continue this relationship? Did you know in 2010, speaking of deaths, these were attributed to TECO, 17 deaths, 13 hospital admissions, 14 ER visits for asthma, 23 heart attacks, nine chronic bronchitis attacks, 240 asthma attacks, and those sources are from, find your risk from power plant pollution. Answering my own question from last week, coal ash pile was cleaned, one coal ash pile.
Appreciate your comments.
That's it?
That's it. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. For those that are here to speak on TECO, the gentleman in the back here, Brandon Wagner, is available to answer any of your questions or any feedback that you'd like to give him. May I have a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote. Bonnie, you want to induce a first-time certain?
Thank you. The first-time certain is item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendment to the program year period. And Brenda Brackens with Affordable Housing Services is here to present this item.
Good morning.
My name is Brenda Brackens, and I'm the interim Affordable Housing Director. I'm here to recommend that we conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendment to the program year 21 Home ARP Allocation Plan and accept public comments for submittal to HUD. Also, close the public comic period that began April 5 and approve and adopt the substantial amendment to the Home ARP Allocation Plan. The allocation plan recommends reallocating funds from the development of non-congregate shelters and tenant-based rental assistance activities to fund new construction of permanent affordable housing. There is no fiscal impact associated with this agenda item. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? If not, that closes the public hearing period that began April 5. I got a motion to approve Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. If there's no comments, please... If there's no comments, please accord your vote.
Thank you. Thank you. The next public hearing is item D2. This is the first of two public hearings to consider the adoption of an ordinance declaring zoning in progress regarding the moratorium for vaping retail shops. Johanna Lundgren with the County Attorney's Office is here to present this item.
Good morning, Joy.
Good morning, Board. This is the first public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance declaring zoning in progress and providing for a temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops within 500 feet of any public or private elementary, middle, or secondary school for a period of 180 days. You'll recall that on March 1st, the Board declared zoning in progress and directed the scheduling of the public hearings and the preparation of an ordinance providing for the six-month moratorium. This moratorium will allow for the necessary time for staff to prepare and schedule public hearings on the adoption of Land Development Code amendments that will regulate the minimum distance of these vape retailers from schools. This is the first of the two public hearings that are required for the adoption of the moratorium. No vote is required this morning. The second and final hearing for the adoption of the moratorium will be scheduled for May 3rd. Again, this is a public hearing, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Commissioner Owen?
Yes, and I just want to thank staff for all your hard work on this. And I also want to thank my fellow county commissioners here that have been backing me up and supporting me on this. This issue, this vaping issue in Hillsborough County, it's just been shocking when we look at the numbers. And Ms. Beck, thank you and your whole legal team. I know this is one of the first of two hearings, but I am so looking forward to getting this wrapped up. And this 180-day moratorium, I think, is really, really important so we can avoid any type of flurry of zoning requests. So again, thank you for this. Thank you, Board, for treating this as really important because the protection of our youth from this product is critical right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bonnie, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is Commissioner Owen's item, item F2 at 10:15. This is to approve an honorary roadway designation for Kensington James Road on County Road 39.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, I want to thank the family and friends of Kensington. You know, I didn't know the family prior to this horrific incident, and I can tell you, you know, it's something about South and East County and the folks from there. We sure rally behind people when a tragedy like this happens. And I just want to tell you all on behalf of this board that, and I'll go ahead and speak on behalf of them before anyone speaks, our hearts are absolutely broken for you. So this agenda item is to designate County Road 39 as an honorary road designation in the name of Kensington James Winchester. This designation is made pursuant to board policy. Kensington was just five months old. She went to be with our Lord and Savior on March 20, 2023. A car struck her and her mom on County Road 39 in 672. Her brief impact on so many lives, including mine, cannot be understated. First, on behalf of the board, like as stated before, we give our extreme condolences. Thankfully, I cannot say I relate to this loss. Parents and grandparents should not be in this position. You all have taught me much about courage and strength. My nephew is just seven months old, and I could not imagine this situation happening to my family. This designation is to preserve her memory, one that I will hope reminds drivers to recognize the dangers of this particular intersection. I also want to commend the residents again of my district, South and East County. We've all cried with you, and we all have rallied behind this amazing family. I ask you today, Commissioners, to approve this unique item in honor of Kensington for many years to come. This board is a political body, I know that, but I think this is one of those situations where we look to our hearts and we look past politics and we do the right thing. Before I move for this, I did mention to the family and friends that were here today about the steps that our staff has taken, and I want to thank staff because, again, I wasn't asking this, it was when I was demanding, and our staff has kind of gone over and above on this. So I want to just, before I make the motion, give you a status of where we're at on the road. Engineering and Operations Department conducted a traffic engineering investigation on the intersection and identified safety enhancements that can be implemented, some within 45 days, some will take up to six months. The investigation included evaluating crash history, vehicle speed and volumes, sightlines, traffic signs, and pavement markings and surrounding land use. Characteristics of the area include a rural tea intersection on a designated truck route with 4,000 to 6,000 vehicles per day. Improvements that can be made and implemented within the next 45 days include installing new stop-ahead warning signs and pavement markings, refurbishing the yellow center lines and white edge lines, installing new closely spaced reflective pavement markings, vegetation removal, and reduction of the, which this is really something I actually didn't even ask for, that staff came back, a reduction of the speed limit on County, on 672 with the installation of rumble strips approaching the intersection. Improvements that can be implemented within the next six months include installation of new solar-powered flashing beacons on the warning signs approaching the intersection. So there's a lot of changes that are going to take place, in my mind, all in honor of Kensington James Winchester. So I move for this board to approve an honorary road designation for Kensington James Avenue on County Road 39.
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And again, I'm sure everyone here, this speaks for this tragedy. I can't imagine myself, I actually have a two-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter, and I just, I just can't imagine experiencing this. The tragedy, and I so appreciate everyone taking this further action to alert this board about this particular place and this particular tragedy, for us to know this and understand that something has to be done there. It is something that, as a board, Hillsborough County has been working on for some six years. We've had Vision Zero as part of this, recognizing the fatalities and the issue that we have with traffic in Hillsborough County. Vision Zero is to draw our attention to the issues that we have. We're number two in the nation, over and over again, in Hillsborough County in traffic fatalities, crash fatalities, and injuries, incapacitating injuries, which Kensington's mom showed us the other kinds of results that can also affect lives, for all their lives, for accidents that occur. We've been, year after year after year, one of the places in the entire nation, number one per capita for large counties in fatalities and serious injuries, either sometimes pedestrians, bicycles, and crashes. And a lot of it is due to the fact that we, as the speakers so eloquently pointed out, but it's the blistering pace of growth, the incapacity of us to keep up with infrastructure. This also crossed state road, I believe. And so that is also a mix of jurisdictions, believe it or not, when we talk about these things. So I just, I wanted to alert you that we have been working on this and looking and designating and recognizing these intersections throughout the county. It's a terrible, horrible problem, and I don't, I know we're dealing with this intersection now after a tragedy. I know people in the audience said that they had contacted the county. I'm sure we get contacted often about many places. I mean, I just, Bloomingdale Avenue, just some years ago, I think, six people died in two different incidents in a matter of a year or two. We've had, in front of Chamberlain High School, excuse me, in front of Chamberlain High School, a high schooler was hit and killed some years ago. Two teenagers walking to school across Hillsborough Avenue. I think many of us recognize the woman who was pushing her stroller from out of town across Bay Shore Boulevard, and two teenagers decided to drag race at 11:00 in the morning, right after their high school graduation, and that resulted in two tragic fatalities. We have an ongoing problem, and some of that is lowering the speeds. And, you know, I just think, I'm not even sure where we go with this because we do keep increasing every year. We had record numbers of fatalities in 2022, 219, 226, I mean, 255 in 2021. And we already, this year, this year, have had 24 fatalities since January 1st. So I don't know if we, what system, and I'll ask maybe at future items, we do have our Transportation Planning Organization, our TPO, that looks at this on an ongoing basis, identifies this, looks at resources. It can be a really difficult ask sometimes to get what's called a warrant, to get more treatment of an intersection in terms of lights and crosswalks and rapid flashing beacons. We've been doing them all over the county. It's been a new effort, I think, in the last decade or so to, we are familiar with the school zones, lowering speeds on roads, and I appreciate your witness and testimony to this particular and very sad tragedy this morning. We have so many of these happening in Hillsborough County, and we, you know, we're pushing ahead, but we're, I think we're going to have to really think about what we can do to, we do have a Vision Zero list of the highest crash fatality, injury, intersections in places identified in Hillsborough County that we've been working on year after year. But I, you know, we're investing more than we've ever invested in this, but I do think we have to really just be strong about pushing for our lowering of the speed limits, our treating of these intersections. It is a tragedy, a particular tragedy for our county. So I'm very, very sorry for your loss and, you know, in memory of Kensington, as well as so many others that have been injured or killed on our streets here, we will continue to work and pay and keep trying to work to make this situation, to do what we can with this situation. But I think we're going to have to figure out a way to accelerate this, or I'm not sure where we can go, but I think we're going to have to start thinking about how we can move forward with identifying these and put fixes in place faster for what is occurring.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wostel.
I have a lot of thoughts, and I do want to say sincerely that your courage to come here today is just beyond anything that I believe myself to have been capable of, quite frankly, doing, especially so soon afterwards. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say the truthful thing, the hard thing, which was said by some of the speakers in the audience. I'm not going to offer you fluff, frankly, because I'm not a very good politician. This county ignored improving infrastructure in line with growth. They have not found a sense of priority to fund this infrastructure that is desperately needed to prevent these exact horrific tragedies from happening, and I will be your absolute loudest voice in ensuring that that gets done through my next four years in office. You have my sincere, deep condolences. Thank you very much for coming.
Commissioner Owen.
Yes, and thank you, Commissioners. I want to first, too, I didn't explain why the, what the name of the designation. We're only allowed 16 letters, so Caleb, it's nothing personal. I talked to Grandma, and she said that Kensington James would be okay. So that's what we kind of come up with. I need to amend my own motion because I said avenue and it needs to be road. So I amend and I move for this board to approve an honorary road designation in the name of Kensington James Road on County Road 39.
Okay. I guess that's a substitute motion.
Yeah. So we got a motion by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Kemp. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Bonnie, next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is item B3. This is to review and appeal the Hearing Master's decision regarding a protest of procurement for waste transfer services for the Solid Waste Management Division. Before we go into this, Sam Hamilton from the County Attorney's Office is going to speak to process. We have Scott Strommer with the Procurement Services and Robert Schimberg, who is the attorney for Bulk Express, here as well.
Good morning. Sam Hamilton, County Attorney's Office. Thanks for the intro. As far as the process, the process for this matter is governed by county ordinance. The county has a procurement protest policy and procedures ordinance. That's what sort of governs this process. Briefly, what the ordinance provides for is in your review, you should consider only the record on appeal, which is quite lengthy, but you should not consider any new evidence or matters or any other new issues that were not part of the record. The ordinance provides at this juncture, two options. By simple majority vote, you can decide to affirm the Hearing Master's decision, or you can remand the matter back to the Hearing Master. If you choose the latter approach, the ordinance provides that you need to specify the reason for the remand and what the Hearing Master is to address when it's reconsidered at that level. The ordinance also speaks to the actual presentations. Each party is limited to 10 minutes. The board certainly can ask questions. We would just need to make sure that the respective parties get their full 10 minutes. If either or both parties want to provide time for rebuttal, they should so state at the introduction of their presentation. With that, we can certainly answer any questions as to process. If there are none, it would be appropriate to hear from the parties, first a representative from Bulk Express Transport, followed by Scott Strommer, your procurement director.
Okay. Good morning, sir.
Commissioners, thank you for hearing us today. I'm Robert Schimberg with Hillward Henderson Law Firm. I have the pleasure today to represent Bulk Express Transport. I'm here with the president of Bulk Express, Jack Montero, who lives in Hillsborough County. The company is here in Hillsborough County, employs over 300 people in the county. Just for purposes, would like to reserve three minutes for rebuttal at the end of the county's presentation. In pursuant to what Mr. Hamilton says, we are asking you to follow the option to send this back to the hearing officer. We're asking you to send it back to the hearing officer, to remand it to her, to not rule on the merits of the case, but to send it back to the hearing officer, Julia Mandell, for her to specifically address the issue, the open issue in this case, about whether procurement is bound by their entire ITB. In this case, it's a 55-page document, and we're going to hand a copy, actually, we're handing a copy to each of you today. It's a 55-page document, and the question that we're asking you to remand to the hearing officer is whether procurement is bound by their entire ITB, all 55 pages of it, which includes page one of 55. And if they are bound by it, is the county, which is the drafter or preparer of the document, is the document construed against them and in favor of the bidder who did not prepare the document? That's what we're asking the hearing officer charged to be. We're only asking it to be remanded to her today, not that you decide on the merits of the case about who's right or who's wrong. And just by quick background, and I would ask, we had presented a PowerPoint, it's a And just by quick background, and I would ask, we had presented a PowerPoint, if a PowerPoint could go up, that'd be great, but we had submitted a PowerPoint with regard to this, and if you can go to the next slide. Bulk Express responded to this 55-page ITB. And in responding to this 55-page ITB, Bulk Express submitted their bid on time, it's without question. They submitted it on October 13th, 2022, well before the 2:00 PM deadline. They submitted the lowest bid of the bidders. And after uncertainty about the PDF submission through the Oracle or online system, they also timely submitted it through an email pursuant to the terms of the bid document. And that's really the crux of the issue today. If you look at page one of 55 that we handed to you today, on, on page one of 55, it says right there, gives the pertinent information about the bid, and then it says, please submit your response to Hillsborough County, Brian Bickhart, the location, and it gives the email. And so Bulk Express followed those clear instructions that were provided to them. And in fact, they sent an email with it. They said to the county that at 1:28 PM, I believe I've just successfully uploaded the Bulk Express Transport STD Enterprises bid package for your on, to your online portal in response to the Hillsborough County Waste Transfer Services bid. I have found it a very difficult system to understand and navigate, so as a backup, I am attaching the same bid package here. Thank you, Bert Lur from Bulk Express. So what Mr. Lur did is, he followed the two avenues that he saw in the 55-page package to submit the bid submission through the portal, the Oracle system, which by the way, you all don't use the Oracle system anymore at this point, but he submitted it through the Oracle system. But he said it was difficult to navigate, he had questions about it. So he said, I'm also following page one of 55 that you have, where it says, please submit your response to Brian Bickhart, and it gave his email address. The county in receipt of that email said, we're deleting your email, and they in fact deleted his email and said, we're not receiving it by email, we only receive through the portal. A bid protest ensued, and the issue was whether, there was a conflict in the documents and whether it should have been accepted through the email as well as through the portal. Julia Mandell was the hearing officer, she went through the information, and she authored a five-page order, if you will, in this case. And in the order, she explained in great detail why the, why the online portal system can be very, very difficult to navigate. And she said she understands that Bulk Express as a first-time user would have trouble, have trouble navigating it. And she even gave recommendations to procurement about things they might want to do in the future to make the process easier and more transparent to bidders. However, she did not address the issue of the conflict between page one, which allows for emails, and page 34, that, that says that bids should be submitted exclusively through the portal, and says no emails. So again, Bulk Express acting in good faith, Bert Lur, he thoroughly went through this document. And you may say, why do you have this document in front of you? And it's a very good question. And the question's answered because your procurement department told the bidders, print this document out in its entirety and use this document as your reference here. And so when they used this document as their reference, the first thing they got to on page one was the email. And Mr. Lur for Bulk Express did exactly what any reasonable bidder or person would do. He attempted to use the, the portal system. When he found it difficult to navigate, he said, I'm going to use the other system, and he used the email system. He got it in on time, he submitted the lowest bid of all the bidders. In the bid protest that, that we went through, she addressed primarily the procurement system and said that the procurement system has a lot of challenges and issues, which again, is not in use anymore. But at that point, she said that there's a, they should, it should have gone through the procurement system. And she even said how, what they submitted through the, the portal, it made sense that they did it that way, but it apparently wasn't the exact right way the county dictated. So we're asking you to send this back to the hearing officer, to remand it to the hearing officer, to have the hearing officer address what we believe is the primary issue, and that is the fact that Hillsborough County procurement authored this document, this 55-page document, and with respect to page one of the document, to address the issue that came out in the hearing, which is not addressed in the order. And that is when procurement said, well, we don't know why they would have printed it out, yet there's a, thank you, yet there's evidence that was presented that procurement told them to print it out. And when they were questioned about why it was, why it was written the way it was written, procurement said, oh, this was used for old circumstances, the way this was written. And so they weren't really sure why it was used in this bid. They said it was really for other bid, other bid or procurements. And they said that in fact, they'd never not only audited it, but hadn't read the language here. So we're asking simply that you remand this back to the hearing officer for further proceedings, for her to address the issue of the conflict, and specifically what's written on page one of the procurement document, the email situation, for her to dictate whether that conflict goes in favor of the county procurement who drafted that, or should go in favor of the third-party innocent bidder, Bulk Express, who did not draft it, but followed the county's dictates and printing it out and following what was on there. Thank you, and I reserve my last three minutes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schimberg. Is Scott going to present, or who's presenting from staff?
Good morning, Scott Stromer, procurement services. County will also reserve probably three to four minutes at the end of its presentation to deal with what we just represented. After an exhaustive review of the records and facts, testimony from both sides, careful consideration, the hearing master upheld the county's decision not to accept the bid that Bulk Express submitted by email, after finding that both procurement procedures manual and section 4.1 of the invitation to bid clearly and expressly prohibited the consideration of offers submitted by email. Ultimately, Bulk Express did not submit their bid through the county's electronic bidding system by the scheduled bid opening date and time as required. The fact that Bulk Express believed that it had successfully submitted a bid through the electronic bidding system, and then mailed a backup copy of that bid, demonstrates that Bulk Express knew and understood that it was required to submit its bid through the electronic bidding system. The very first instruction to bidders in section 4.1 of the invitation to bid clearly states, "The county shall only accept offers through its electronic bidding system. Offers delivered by non-electric means, facsimile, electronic mail or email, or electronic means other than through the county's electronic bidding system will not be considered." There is nothing confusing about this language. For whatever reason, Bulk Express selectively chose to ignore the email prohibition, and by doing so, fully assumed the risk of not having its bid accepted. Despite the county's offer of assistance and instructional resources well before the bid opening date and time, Bulk Express chose not to avail itself of such help. Quite simply, email is not a secure means of submitting sealed bids. Allowing a single bidder to submit its bid by email despite the clear prohibition is patently unfair to the other competing bidders and compromises the basic tenets of competitive sealed bidding. Four other bidders did successfully submit their bids by the scheduled bid opening date and time using the electronic bid system. Bulk Express argument that it submitted the lowest bid is not permissible, given that it was not one of the arguments set forth in the Bulk Express protests of the director of procurement or the hearing master. The protest ordinance mandates that the board cannot consider new issues that were not previously set forth during the directors or hearing masters review of the protests that could have been reasonably raised at the time of such review. In addition, any suggestion that Bulk Express is the lowest response for responsible bidder is presumptuous. The protest was filed within days of the bid opening, therefore, the procurement process was automatically paused in accordance with the protest ordinance, and no evaluation of the responses occurred. Hit one of the other points that they brought up. They talked about that the county required and directed the printing of the PDF. Actually, the exact question that was posed by another bidder, not Bulk Express, in online discussion, discussions was, quote, "Could you please clarify where we can find the RFQ document? We have signed in into the negotiation details from the county's portal, and we weren't able to find it." The exact answer from the county staff was, in writing, "Good morning. Once you have selected RFQ 23702 from the iSupplier portal, in the top right corner, you will find an actions dropdown menu. Select that dropdown, and one of the selections will read printable PDF. Select that, and the entire RFQ should be in one PDF format for your review. It does not say or imply, print it out, fill it out, and submit it that way." It's just like the rest of us and the rest of the world, that instead of reading it online, a lot of times we'll simply generate a printable PDF and read it that way in one I urge the board to uphold the hearing master's decision to maintain the integrity of the competitive sealed bid process, which will allow us to immediately begin the process of evaluating the bids that were properly submitted, and move forward with an award. Recommendation, as soon as possible, to avoid any disruption in these critical services, which involve the transfer of waste between solid waste facilities and ultimately impacting the collection of curbside trash throughout the county. Again, I'd like to reserve the remainder of our time to address any further comments. If there are no additional comments, County Attorney's Office and Procurement Services is happy to answer any questions.
All right, hold on, hold on one moment, Mr. Stromer. I think Commissioner Cohen has a question for you.
I have a question, and actually, it's really going to be for both of you. Mr. Stromer, to you first, was there any time prior to the bid submission deadline where you were, are aware that the portal was not working correctly?
No.
And did anyone else complain to you that they were having difficulty using the portal?
No. I, I will say this. So October 5th, we received a request from Bulk Express. The original bid opening date was going to be October 6th. Because of Hurricane Ian, they asked if they could have some additional time. Within minutes, we granted an additional week for all the bidders, so they had additional time to prepare their bids. In that email, and a string of emails following the extension, within minutes, Bulk Express complained about how confusing the system is and where can they go to get assistance. We promptly, within minutes, provided the phone number, the email, and the office to call within our office, which is the iSupplier support team. And those of you and your aides who have dealt with our support team and the vendors, they're very quick and they're right on it. We never received any call from them, they never asked for help. It wasn't until we received their bid on the 13th and this email that they again complained about the system. There was a lot of complaining, but there wasn't a lot of learning. And as for the first time use, a lot of things are confusing if you use it the first time and you don't read the instructions or you don't ask for help.
And how long was, was the bid period open for?
It was open for approximately 41 days.
41 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and Mr. Schimberg, perhaps when you make your rebuttal, you could address it from your point of view as well. Thanks.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, I'll keep you up here. Yeah, just as to this bid process, the contract that's attached, it becomes a binding with the bid, basically. Could you give me a little background on how that works?
Yeah, so the solicitation itself will form part of the contract. So we will, we will issue a purchase order, which essentially becomes a short-form contract, which will bring in the terms and conditions and all the specifications and all the rest of it.
Okay, and the issue that they're stating on, information we gave them that, that's conflicting with the contract, page one and 34, could you address that?
Sure. So that page one, what that's intended for, remind the board that both the city of Tampa and Hillsborough County use this system. That's why it's important we have to identify which entity they're submitting their bid to. This is very general information at the front. We call it the cover page because it immediately precedes the table of contents. And it really doesn't fall into the definition of what actually the bid documents or solicitation documents are within the solicitation. Believing this, it has an email, a, an email and a phone number for the staff member. Within the solicitation document, it points to this for how they're supposed to contact staff, which is, that's how they have the email address of how they sent their bid in, that's how they ask questions, that's how they have that contact information. It's very, very brief. The county did previously, several years ago, also accept manual bids, I mean, paper-based bids. When they did that, when we did actually receive those, paragraph or section 4.1 had a very long, and it's in the record, a very long set of instructions of how to submit a sealed bid. If you go just based on this little summary here, do they just bring the paper bid in and drop it on the floor in county center? Because all it has is an address. It doesn't say, it has to be in a sealed envelope, it doesn't say where it has to go, it doesn't say that it has to be marked, nothing. So in addition, when we used to accept pre-bids, that's, or hard copy bids, the email prohibition was also in that language way back when. This language has been in place for probably in excess of 10 years and thousands of bids. No one has ever had an issue with this language. Because you, you'd have to suspend all logic and stop reading after the first page. Once you got to 4.1, it's really clear what you can do and what you can't do, if that helps.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, with these, and what they were referencing earlier, too, you know, it's giving me flashbacks here to being in court. You know, we, we always construe typically contracts against the drafters, but when you get in commercial settings, everyone's deemed sophisticated. I, I guess if you, you could just address that argument that they made, that, I guess what, what their position could be is that the email almost is creating another contract or a conflict between the actual bid contract and, and I guess the email that you were just referencing. Could you address that real quick?
Okay, I'm not, I'm not quite following.
Well, what they're saying is that the, the contract is conflicting, I guess that email conflicts with the terms of the contract and that that should be construed against the drafter. That was one of their statements, so if you could just briefly address that.
In that, that the email they sent to us with the bid?
Yeah.
That they interpreted that that was allowable.
Right.
Arguably, on that front page, there is no reference to the electronic bidding system. So how did they know to submit it up to the electronic bidding system? It's because they did read paragraph one, and they saw it, because that's where it appears, that that's the only, that's the only way to do it. So again, remember the email that he showed you. I think we successfully submitted the email through the system. It was terrible, what we could do was confusing, and so I've, I've got this backup. So it's kind of hard to have it both ways.
Okay, great. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you. So you said that you, when they sent, because the email line is, is confusing. So when they sent the email, the original argument that was presented was that you simply deleted it. But was there actually a response saying, you must do X? I, I don't, and you have that email? It would, I guess it would have been nice to have seen, but you have an email responding back to them saying you must go online?
Yes, it's part of the record. So I'll paraphrase the email. We did get one. So they submitted their email, the time on their email that they sent was, I believe, 1:29 in the afternoon, so 1:29 PM. Brian Bickhart, who's the coordinator, who was the receiver of the bids, was overseeing, did not see that email until 1:57. So they waited till the last 31 minutes of the solicitation period to get in the system and start bumping around to submit their bid. So we responded, as soon as Brian saw it, he responded and said, I have not received your bid, and you're not able to submit it by email. It has to go through the portal.
Okay. And you said they read paragraph one, which is of this invitation to bid?
Yeah, so 4.1 is the...
They read 4.1.
I'm sorry, what is it, page 34? Right. Page 34, section 4.1. And it's aptly titled, "Instructions Bid Submissions."
Okay. And this is a current vendor who's reapplying for the bid? Or this is a new vendor that, is this system is the first time that anyone's using it?
No, no, this is the old EBS that was working for 10 years.
Okay, and is, is this specific waste transfer, are they an existing vendor, or they're a new applicant for this bid?
For this contract, they're not the incumbent.
Okay.
For this particular contract. If they're a new vendor, I'm not really sure.
If they've, if they've ever bid before?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Schimberg, you have a three-minute rebuttal, plus any additional time you need to answer questions.
Thank you. Just in response, starting with Commissioner Cohen. So with regard to the system, Bulk Express had been called out with regard to responding to Hurricane Ian. What they do work all over the state of Florida, after doing the work in response to Hurricane Ian, when they were working on this bid, on this bid response, they went on the system. Mr. Lur went on it. He clearly saw that he had two ways to submit, and he clearly said, my first way to submit is going to be through the portal. He went on the portal for the first time, and he, he looked at it, he said, okay, it makes sense, I've downloaded the document, because they told me to download it. And just point of clarification, Mr. Stromer says that it was... And just point of clarification, Mr. Stromer says that it was an answer to a question, and I can just read you something that the hearing officer said. She said that with regard to why it was downloaded, she clearly says that, and I'll just read it to you from footnote number seven, "While clearly not intentional, this process was made more confusing by the September 13, 2022 Hillsborough County response to a question from a potential bidder in which Hillsborough County gave direction to download and print the PDF of the bid. And the reason that Mr. Stromer wants to stay away from the downloaded printable copy of the bid is because he wants to totally ignore page 1 of the document. He wants to ignore it as if it totally doesn't exist." And he says, "Oh," he even admits that there are two, you can't do two different things, but that's exactly what he and the procurement department were asking the bidders to do, were to figure out which of the two things that you could do. Do you submit it by the portal? Do you submit it by email? Bulk Express acted in good faith, and we're not asking you to make a decision today that they did it the right way or the wrong way. We're asking you to send it back to the hearing officer for the hearing officer to enter an order with regard to the page 1 that Mr. Stromer wants everyone to ignore. And he says, "Oh, it's just a cover page." And he makes, he actually makes a pretty compelling argument, but I think it's for our side. He says, "It's a cover page, and we used it for other circumstances." So I believe he's admitting that the cover page, as he calls it, or page 1 of 55 of the document, shouldn't even have been here. And he says, "No, nobody looks at that document." Well, Bulk Express, they did what a reasonable bidder would do, and they started on page 1 of 55, and the first thing they saw was the clear direction that the county gave them. And the direction the county gave them was, "Please submit your response to." It couldn't be any clearer than that. It says right here, "Please submit your response to," and it says Brian Burkhardt. And Mr. Stromer wants people to take the position, he says, "Well, the county knew that that really applied years ago when we said, 'Well, you could hand-deliver it to us in a sealed envelope.'" Well, that's not what it says on the document. It says, "Please submit your response to Brian Burkhardt, location, email." And so I'll close by saying that Bulk Express acted in tremendous good faith in this situation. They did nothing but act in good faith in this situation. We're not asking you to agree with us, even though we think that that's the case. We're asking you to send this back to the hearing officer with a direction for the hearing officer, Julia Mandell, to consider page 1 of this document, that they conveniently tried to call a cover page and say shouldn't be considered, but you can't say that when it's page 1 of 55. It's one of the pages, as you've all recognized, and I'll, but by virtue of the questions that you all had today and the issues that have come up, you can see that there's a lot of issues swirling around here. But what we know clearly is that after working to try to get it in through the portal, Bulk Express said, "Well, I'm going to follow what it says on page 1 in addition to that, where it says, 'Please submit your response to.'" So we'd ask that you vote today to remand it back to the hearing officer, Julia Mandell, for her to address the conflict on page 1 of 55 of the ITB, which was created by procurement of Hillsborough County. Let her have further proceedings. And happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schimberg. I don't see any questions right now. Mrs. Stromer, or Commissioner Myers? No. Mrs. Stromer, your rebuttal.
So going back to the hearing master's order, and I read you the exact language from the online discussion from the vendors. So the hearing master implied that we directed to print. I just read the exact language of what it says, which that is not the case. So I wanted to make sure that that's clear. That is exactly, and it's in the record that way. There's nothing wrong with the language on that cover page. There's nothing wrong with it. It's been there for a long time. The intent is, we're very comfortable with it. And the argument that we haven't audited, haven't reviewed it, when you fill out the templates and you fill out those solicitation documents, it automatically populates that page. We can't edit it. It's just automatic. We know it's there. We know what the language is. It has never been a problem. So why would we be concerned about it? We're not. We rely on our vendors to read the entire document. There's a lot of important stuff in this document about solid waste transfer and with the permits that are at risk, everything else. There's a lot of stuff in there. So I'm supposed to presume that they haven't read everything? I don't know how you resolve the conflict from that very clear sentence and that. At least it should have generated a question. So I'd argue that the vendor in this case did not do any reasonable. They just sat back, identified what they thought at the last minute that they had a loophole, and did not try to clarify it. And I'd like, the rest of my time will go to the County Attorney's Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ken Pope. I'm actually the Assistant County Attorney who handled this matter below before the hearing master. So this morning, as Mr. Hamilton explained to you, you have really two choices. That is to affirm or remand. The hearing master below heard all of the arguments that you're hearing this morning. She previously heard those when the case was before her. And having heard the issue of whether it was the first page was confusing or not, that's something that she has already heard. The only issue really today is to determine whether, in your opinion, that she erred and her finding in favor of the county at that hearing below. And I want to read to you what I read to Ms. Mandell at the hearing, and that's Florida Supreme Court case Graham versus Clyde. It's, it says in part, "By rule generally approved, equity will not relieve against the mistake of one guilty of culpable negligence. Neither will it relieve against a mistake that could have been avoided by caution. If one seeking relief could have avoided his mistake by reasonable care or diligence, a court of equity will not relieve him. In other words, if one mistake is due to his own negligence, lack of foresight, there's absence of fraud, or imposition, equity will not relieve him." So what this talks about is there were four successful bidders. They all read the same first page, and they also read the rule 4.1 that said that it can only be submitted by our electronic portal system, not by email. So having said all of that, I would ask that this board would affirm the decision of the hearing master.
All right, thank you, sir. That concludes the presentation, the rebuttals. We'll go into board discussion. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Schimberg for coming in to present his case on behalf of the client. And thank you, Scott, for representing the county. My motion is I move that affirm the hearing master's decision on the appeal based on the supporting documents submitted in the backup of the agenda. That is my motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, could you, could you come back up, the county attorney? Two things. The, first, the case that you referenced, is that a contract-related case that has to do with this type of process, the bidding process? I'm just curious. I don't know the case. It is? Okay. Do you know briefly what happened in that scenario?
I don't recall all of the facts in it. Just the language that I just read to you, basically it's talking about you can't, you can't benefit from your own mistake.
Right, okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that was contractual when you say negligence too as well. I just want to make sure that that's a similar scenario that we're dealing with right here.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if you'd like, I can read the citation to the record if you would.
Sure, go ahead and do that.
Okay, it's Graham versus Clyde, it's a Florida Supreme Court case, 1952, is cited at 61 Southern Second, 656.
Okay, great, thank you. And Mr. Schimberg, real quick, I heard what, I heard your reasoning, what you're wanting to do to remand, to consider the page 1, but what Mr. Stromeyer kind of said is, it seems like they did consider that page 1 already. Could you briefly respond to that?
So we believe that based on, we can only base it on the order that was presented, and you all have the ability, that based on the evidence that was presented was not considered, or there's a legal issue here. And I can just tell you, the evidence that was presented, that in the order that was authored by Ms. Mandell, it doesn't say anything about the inconsistency with page 1. It doesn't say anything about the fact that Mr. Stromer calls it a cover sheet and about the fact that the county authored it and they've never read it. So the information is not referenced in there. The order is filled with issues about the challenges or issues with the online portal system. And then it finishes by saying, based on the, by the procurement manual and by page 34, emails aren't allowed, so we're ruling in favor of the county. So we believe that the issue was not considered and didn't go into the calculus of the order, which is specifically what we appealed on, the contradiction of page 1.
Okay, so not necessarily that they didn't consider it, that there's evidence that they didn't consider, or didn't consider it appropriately? Is that fair to say? Because I'm just seeing that's a little conflicting from what Mr. Stromeyer stated or what we're reading, what's been read in the record, that they did consider that page. You see my confusion?
Well, I can't tell you whether they considered it or not. I can just, so the evidence that we put on was from the county, where the county said we, you know, he called it, you know, a cover page. He said, "We didn't do this, we didn't do this, we didn't do this." Now, we're going just on the order and the, so based on the order that's entered, we believe that there's a legal issue that needs to be considered by the hearing master, and that's why we're asking it to be remanded, to address that narrow legal issue. We're not asking it, we're not asking you all to decide on the merits of the case, but just for it to be remanded to decide the issue of the conflict, because nowhere in there does it talk about the conflict on page 1 and what the legal significance is of that. And that's what we're asking it to be remanded for.
Okay, thank you.
And just for purposes of the record also, he said that, you know, I talked about the low bid. That was in the record. They submitted it into the record. They submitted all the other four bids into the record. So it was in the record, by the way, what the other four bidders bid.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you. I see the last correspondence, and gentlemen, please state, was at 2:02 PM, you were confirmed that they had not received the file via the electronic submission. You had several hours, so I'm just curious, was there another attempt to submit the PDF on the online platform?
So the online platform, Mr. Lor attempted to do that at 1:29. He believed he had done it. He didn't get a response back, as Mr. Stromer said, he didn't get a response back from the county until 2 o'clock. And so by that time, the period is run. That's why at 1:29, when he said, long before the period was due, he said, "I believe I've done it the right way, difficult system to navigate, so I've sent the backup." So once 2 o'clock hit, he did not attempt to do it again.
So the close date was
The 13th.
The 13th at 2:00 PM.
Correct.
You had a full 24 hours to go onto the online platform. You were confirmed, clearly, it is not received. So you had 24 hours. You received a response at 1:57 that they have not received your bid from the county and cannot accept them via email. They need to be in the portal. You responded again at 2:02, saying that you did, but you, and then your response again at 2:02 PM from Mr. Burkhardt, once again, "I can assure you, we did not receive it." So you had 24 hours to go and do what was asked on the online portal. And that's what I'm confused with.
With all due respect, Commissioner, that was all the same day. That happened within a span of 20 minutes. This all happened on October 13, 2022, so...
No, that, this happened, according to the record, on October the 12th, 2022, a full 24 hours before the October 13th deadline at 1,400 hours.
October the 12th?
And that's according to the backup, the judgment. So it's, it seems that you had a full 24 hours to resubmit.
I think everybody will stipulate that it all, Mr. Stromer agrees, it all happened on the 13th, within a 20-minute window. There was not 24 hours. It was within the 20-minute window that Bulk Express sent it in at 1:29. They submitted to the portal, and then when they sent the email saying, "We just tried to submit it through the portal, and so we're giving you the email." So all this happened on the 13th. I believe the county, do you all agree to that? I mean, that's clear.
It was all on the 13th.
Yes.
Their bid came in at 1:29. We did not see that email until 1:57.
Sorry, it all, yes, yeah.
Okay.
So they, and then just by one other point of clarification, the significance of the printing of the document that the county directed us to do is that what Bulk Express thought you did with the portal is, they thought you hand-wrote everything on the printed document and you submitted the PDF. That's what they did. The county said, "We never got it. You never, you didn't do it the right way." And so Bulk Express, you know, said, "Well, this is how we did it." But that's the way they believed to do it, based on their understanding of the system. But it all happened within, you know, prior to the time period.
Okay, just so for the record, the backup does clearly say October 12th, so that's probably important that that gets corrected.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see the backup.
So you, you in fact had, you had 20 minutes. Okay.
And when we say 20 minutes, we weren't, Mr. Burkhardt, Mr., they didn't respond to our client until one minute before the 2:00 PM deadline, and by then, our client had already submitted the email package to him, and he said, "I've deleted what you sent." He said, "But I'm, you know, you got, it's one minute to go now. So if the backup, which we never saw, and we'd be happy to take a look at, suggested otherwise, that's not accurate. It all happened on the 13th."
Okay, all right, I yield. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
So it's 2 o'clock on the day that the bid is due, and at 1:57 or 1:58, right before the deadline, you get this email back that you can't send it by email and we haven't received it. The only analogy I can make to being in this situation is when we've all had to file campaign finance reports, we have to do it on a portal, just like this. And, you know, it sometimes can be, we're not technical people, we don't know what we're doing sometimes, and it can be frustrating and difficult. And I could understand sending an email saying, you know, "Here it is in a backup," to try to save yourself. I think in the case I'm analogizing, it would be to save yourself from being sanctioned for being late in filing the report late if you were having difficulty uploading it. But at 2:00 PM on that day, I would have been on the phone, I would have been emailing, I mean, I wouldn't have allowed the situation to last for, to go on. I would have tried to work it through. So what happened at 2 o'clock? Did it just, nothing happen, or what happened?
So as soon as we, as soon as Bulk Express heard back from Mr. Burkhardt, then Bulk Express immediately started calling IT with the county's support services. They spoke to Ms. Wrench a couple of times. They said, "Hey, what's the problem? How did you not get it? This is what we did." There was, they immediately triggered a strong number of calls, and the county agrees to that. That all came in the record. There was a series of calls, and the long and short of it was, the county said, "We'll look into it, we'll check into it." They said, "We don't see it." And then what they determined was, what you uploaded into the system was the PDF version that you hand-wrote everything, and the intent of the system that you no longer use is that you type everything in there and push submit. You all instead uploaded a PDF of it, and so that's why it wasn't accepted. And so that there was, but that's number one. But number two, Commissioner, is that the reason that Bulk Express was comfortable with the email is because on page 1 of 55, it says, "Please submit your response to Brian Burkhardt by email," and they did it. So they said, "There's two ways to do it. We did it way number one, and now we're doing it by way number two." If there wasn't that way, and I don't know if it's analogous with the campaign reports or not, but there was a second way to do it here, and that's why they did it. They didn't do it going outside of the box. They were clearly within the box that was provided to them.
I don't think that it implies that there's a second way of doing it. I can understand the person submitting it being unclear and wanting to provide a backup or some proof that they had done it, but I don't think, I don't think it, I think page 35 is clear enough that that's the way it's supposed to be committed, submitted. I understand your point, though, that this was a, you know, I think it was, in my view, it was roughly a way of trying to establish a timestamp. But, but, you know, the problem is, is that then you get into the question of the fact that the actual submission itself was incorrectly filled out and, I guess, rejected by the portal for that reason? Is that, is that what happened?
Apparently, apparently. And so with all due respect, Commissioner...
And why, I mean, why would, I mean, it was a 41-day submission period. One good practice is not to wait until the absolute last minute to file it, particularly One good practice is not to wait until the absolute last minute to file it, particularly in the last hour, when these types of things can happen, so.
And, and the testimony at the, at the hearing was that they were all hands on deck in response to Hurricane Ian. They had crews all over southwest Florida, in Charlotte County, and Collier County, and in Hillsborough County responding, and, and, you know, everybody. And so when the person said, oh, I've got to get this in, he had to come away from that work to get this in. And so normally, that wouldn't be the way they did it. In this case, based on dealing with an emergency, they did it that way. Obviously, in hindsight, they wish they would have done it much earlier. And then just the, the last response is that when the testimony at the hearing was by Mr. Lor, when he downloaded this and printed it, that he made a big star on page one where it said, please submit your response to Brian Bickhart, the address and the email address. So he clearly interpreted it the way it's written, the way it's plainly written on the piece of paper. He clearly interpreted it, and his email supports that's how he interpreted it. And for Mr. Stromer to say, well, we never interpreted it that way, but they're the ones that wrote it and never read it, and he himself admits that it wasn't intended for these purposes. They just left it there for 20 years without, without determining whether it fit in these circumstances or not. And so the, the bidder should not be, the bidder should, it shouldn't be construed against the bidder in that case.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Schirr.
Okay. Commissioner Myers, and then we're going to vote.
Thank you. I just want to read a statement from the conclusion of Ms. Mandel. Says, given the clear statement in the procurement manual that the bids cannot be accepted by email in section 4.1 of the bid, which states that offer submitted by email would not be considered, I find that procurement manager does not have the authority to accept the email bid response and thus cannot grant the relief request by the petitioner. Thus, a procurement director decision to deny the petition appeal is upheld.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Mr. Schenberg, I mean, definitely makes a compelling argument, and that I'm not surprised to hear that our, that our, the county's processes are challenging and cumbersome. I probably hear that, if not on a daily basis, a weekly basis, not just with the RFP process, but in many of our processes, some of which I've discussed with staff, and I'll probably bring an agenda item to try and make some improvements there. I do understand that efforts were made to submit properly, and then, again, via email. But as Commissioner Cohen stated, I can't ignore the fact that, you know, you waited to the last minute. I mean, I just, I can't get past that. And the only example that I can give, I guess it was probably a year or two ago now, the board members that were here might recall, and it was an item that I had, I had championed, and, and still championed involving building a film studio here, and we had an RFP go out, and kind of a similar situation, championed by former Commissioner Mark Sharp. And he spent countless time with staff on challenges with the portal, didn't submit, it was down. And at the end of the day, we didn't make, you know, we did not change the process for them, and even though it was by far the best bid, we would have already had a studio built. But, you know, we stuck to our, our practices and our processes, and we, we did it there. And so I'm going to support Commissioner Myers' motion that we stay with our processes, and the motion is just to affirm the hearing master's decision on the appeal, and the second by Commissioner Kemp. No other questions or comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next item.
Thank you. The next item is item B1. This is to approve a 2023 interlocal agreement with the school district. We have various folks here for information. John Patrick is going to present this item. Greg Horwiddell, Assistant Deputy County Administrator, sorry, is here. Adam Gormly is here for any questions, and Chris Farkas with the school district, Chief of Operations, is here for any questions. And getting late, so. Mr. Patrick?
Yes. I don't want to be in, between you and lunch, so I'll make this quick. So, so we started this process of updating the 2016 interlocal agreement because there were some challenges with the process that we have had before. So we, in the joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners and the school board, you had directed us to work together with the school board to bring this update to you. So we have been working with this, with the school board, and the school board took it up last night, and Greg will go over that briefly. He was there at that meeting, so he'll go over that. And today, we are bringing it to you for your approval. I just want to highlight a few things in the interlocal agreement. Over the past couple of years now, we have been coordinating very actively with the school board leadership, and we have had some success in the process. So we are, what we are trying to do here is to cement those processes that have found success in, in how we do business with the school board, specifically creating a staff working group, a staff working group of leaders, leadership from the school board and the, and the county and the planning commission to address these issues very, very head-on and, and plan for the school infrastructure way before it needs to be opened. So I think this is a good process. We have had good success in doing so. One of the things that will happen through this process is the staff, along with the staff working group, the leadership will work with the sites the school board identifies and trying to identify the challenges, and also the, also the requirements for what this school needs, and, and that could be helpful for programming on county side as well as the school board side. The other one is, next. Stop. Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you. So other one is the long-range school planning. This has been being done, last two times was 2017 and 2021. The school board has done, this is a very useful document that identifies the need for schools in the next 20 years. So I think this interlocal agreement cements that as a process that we take, move forward with as well. Then the next one is appeal, appeal of, appeal of some disagreements. Again, this school working group and the leadership of the school board and, and the school board and Hillsborough County, I think, can resolve a lot of these thing, issues before it arises and bubbles up to a higher level. So this does not preclude the other, other remedies that is in the land development code or is in the statute as well. So the other, the next one I want to show you is the review requirement. We are trying to make the review faster. That actually helps. So we are reducing the number of days that is required for reviewing these, these applications for school board into half. That really helps with the process as well. And the last thing is, the last update was done in 2016, and now it's 2023, so there are a lot of statutory changes that has happened. Some of the statutes that were there before is no longer there, and so those were the updates. So I will let Greg talk about what happened yesterday.
For the record, Greg Horwiddell, Deputy County Administrator. Thank you for your attention to this item. Chair Hagan, as you mentioned, we need to streamline some of our processes, and I think this document does exactly that. Very appreciative of the work done by Chris Farkas, Chief of Operations for the school district, also the support of Addison Davis, Superintendent. And the school board did adopt this seven to nothing last night. They were very appreciative of the work done by this county commission to encourage us to come up with a more streamlined process. So with that report, I'm happy to recommend this adoption by this board. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and I was surprised that this hasn't been in place already. Great work. I mean, I can speak for South County on some of the proposed school sites we thought we had. And I know, you know, when you have a PD where the developer comes in and it's part of this community plan, that makes it a lot easier for us. But sometimes, from what I see, we're having to retrofit a lot of these schools that, you know, the school board may not appropriately know how to properly plan for. And I think what this does, correct me if I'm wrong, is it allows us to kind of come together from the beginning to avoid some of that retrofitting or some of these proposed sites that actually would not work for a school because of ditches, inability to do sidewalks, public safety. This allows us to be part of that planning process right from the beginning. Correct?
Yes, Commissioner, you have very accurately summarized exactly what this document does.
Great. Well, great work on this, and I'll move for approval.
I will second.
Commissioner Kemp?
I want to thank staff because I know that I brought this to the attention of the board and drove it for some time. We had issues in, particularly in South and East County, the area where all the new development is going in, where we just had continual issues, in particular, the siding of one high school that was sided on a road that was the, it was, and, you know, it was very substandard and had no plans and no funding to improve that situation for, for any time in the future. And I was very confused about the way that we were siding our schools, about the rules following siding our schools. I started reading about what other counties and areas were doing to try to improve the situation, and I know that there was lots of friction and issues between our county planning department and the schools in terms of looking about how we can best side our schools, particularly for handling the infrastructure around the schools that we're responsible for. And I know that, that we even had a lawsuit that predated my time on the board between the county and the schools, if I'm not mistaken.
Not mine.
With this, with this, yes. Oh, there you go. With, with, as to the same issue. So I'm glad that we, I, I'm glad that we made this big first step, and I know that our Bonnie Wise, I know Greg Horwiddell, I know Adam Gormly, I know other staff, and maybe you can, I don't know exactly what others, because I know it's gone on for a long time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner. I was remiss. I should have mentioned that you were one of the driving forces for us to look at this, and you did bring this up a couple of years ago. And unfortunately, it has taken a little bit longer than we anticipated. There were some changes in staff at the school district level. We had some additional input that we wanted to provide, so this is the outgrowth of that product. I think it's, it does cover all the bases, and it accomplishes what I believe the board indicated they wanted, which was a more streamlined process. It does get us to a better, more collaborative planning posture.
Great. So I'm, and I'm very, very pleased with the effort, and I know it's been a long-term working, workaround here to, to bring us to this. And I'm probably, it'll need some work in the future, but I'm, I'm supporting it, and I'm grateful to the staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Kemp, thank you for all your work on this, and thank you to the staff. Let me, let me tell you how bad this got a couple of years ago. At the TPO, the county commissioners were told by a school district staffer that we were going to have to abandon our Vision Zero principles because they're just simple, we just simply couldn't afford to be, be thinking that way as we, as we were planning for new school sites. And it, that was really one of the, there were many land use meetings where these things came up, but that particular episode sticks in my mind because, if I remember correctly, for Commissioner Kemp, and I think Commissioner Smith, and the rest of us at the, at the time that we're on the TPO, this was a real moment of clarity where we, we reached out, and, and it's really wonderful that the staff has been able to come together and work through some of this. These were very, very difficult and thorny issues. The lawsuit was mentioned, but this, this really did get very contentious for a while, and it's really nice to know that we are putting the pieces back together of working together with the school district to achieve what in many cases are going to be safety improvements in addition to some of the, the other issues that have been discussed related to congestion and, and other planning. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Your comments are well taken. We have several successes over the past couple of years. The Westlake School property, Collins Elementary, Dorothy Thomas, there have been a number of collaborative efforts we've had with the school district, and I'm very pleased with the relationship that we've been able to develop. I look forward to that continuing. And I don't know if Chris wants to say anything. I don't want to put him on the spot.
He wasn't the one that made that comment, by the way, that I.
I know that.
For the record, Chris Farkas, Chief of Operations, Hillsborough County Public Schools. And it's been refreshing and wonderful to work with Greg and staff to try to find the resolution. We're in the same situation, which is, and I apologize for the dress. We were at a board meeting till about 11:30 last night, so. But we're in a situation where funding is always an issue for us. And so instead of being adversarial, being on the same page and planning ahead so that we can both be in a situation for the community, which is what we're both here for, it's a great situation, and finding someone that we can work together with has been great. As Greg mentioned, we have successes we can build on. But I also think that it needs to be a fluid document. It will take changes as we go forward. It will do things that we need to have. I think that when staff's working together, as we've done, I think we'll find successes, and it benefits our community. So we're excited about the opportunity and really appreciative of being collaborative in the planning process, which I think will help both of us.
All right. Just made a couple of comments. I want to, first of all, thank Commissioner Kemp for her work on this. I appreciate all the board comments. I, for one, welcome this interlocal agreement. I want to thank Chris Farkas for being here today and for his leadership on this issue. And I want to thank our staff for working so closely together. I got to tell you, the spirit of cooperation, collaboration has never been better than it is right now. And as was mentioned in the past, there was a lawsuit, then unfortunately, as chair, I had to participate in many, many years ago. I can remember being in, I think, depositions or mediation. I believe that y'all's attorney was Tom Gonzalez, if I'm not mistaken, who was very, a very excellent advocate for, for you guys, to say the least. So I remember those days. We've, we've come a long way, and this is, this is a great day. And so again, I want to thank everybody for working on this because, you know, as, as Chris just said, you know, all you have to do is read the, the paper, go online every week, you know, they're, they're talking about school closings. So clearly, they have funding issues, and, but any way that we can streamline this process, I think it's in the school district's best interest as well as the county commission. So thank you, everybody, for their hard work. And no other comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is item B2. This is to approve by supermajority vote the offer from McGrady Road Investment to purchase 449 acres of undeveloped land in the Baum Community Plan area through the ELAP program. Ms. Beck is going to speak first to this item, and then Forrest Turberville is going to present as well.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. By way of introduction, I just want to note that there is a litigation background to this, which is explained in the agenda item, and there's including pending litigation related to Burt Harris. But the reason that this item is before you today is because we have received a formal written settlement offer, which we have an obligation, not a settlement offer, but a offer to purchase the land, that we have an obligation to present to you. So the issue is primarily an ELAP policy issue. It would require a supermajority vote, and, and if it were to be approved in concept, then staff would bring back the appropriate real estate transactional documents at a future board meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to Forrest to explain the, the nature of this ELAP possibility.
Good morning, Forrest.
All right. Morning, Commissioners. Forrest Turberville, Conservation Environmental Lands Management. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. It's a pleasure. First of all, I'd like to just take a few minutes today to review the history of the county's acquisition efforts for the 450-acre McGrady Road property, and most importantly, later on in the presentation, its ecological significance as well as potential economic benefits to Hillsborough County. So not to go through every single bullet point here and belabor this, because we've already discussed much of this in our, our briefings over the past several weeks, but suffice to say that this property has been on our radar now, the ELAP program's radar, for about two decades. The initial site was approved back in December 2005. In August 2013, we did make an attempt to acquire the core parcel, 367 acres. Unfortunately, our offer was rejected by the previous owner. About a year and a half later, in November 2014, the core parcel sold to McGrady Road Investment LLC. That's the current owner of the property. Over the, the next several years, they added 83 acres to the property. So you combine the 367 plus the 83, we get the 450 acres where we're at today. In August 2019, the previous board denied rezoning for the property. And over the next several years, there was litigation back and forth. Won't go into that in any detail, but the good thing is, is that in February of this year, mediation was held between the property owner and Hillsborough County. It was a day-long mediation held right here in county center. I was part of that, and at the end of the day, we were able to, while we didn't come up with an exact number, price, price-wise, we did say that we would continue to communicate, keep those lines open, and within a few weeks, we were able to come to a compromise of $32.5 million for all 450 acres. So looking at this property in terms of its position in the landscape and why that's important, you can see on your screen that the area that's circled, titled Subject Property, is right in the very heart of a north-south wildlife corridor that extends from northern Manatee County up through about 7,000 acres that we own on the Little Manatee River, crossing upwards to Bullfrog Creek and Little Bullfrog Creek through our Baum Scrub Preserve. From there goes north through the Stacy R. White Preserve, formerly known as the Agmark property. And. crossing upwards to Bullfrog Creek and Little Bullfrog Creek through our Baum Scrub Preserve. From there goes north through the Stacy R. White Preserve, formerly known as the Agmark Property, and then heads east through the 5,000-acre Baum Boyette Scrub, and then to other preservation lands further to the north and to the east. So whenever I evaluate a site and our committee evaluates a site, we always like to look at the historical habitats that used to be there. And to me, this is like one of the coolest parts of the job. You get to, to actually, you know, think of yourself standing along the property boundary and, and looking out over this property as it was in 1938. And in terms of the habitats on this property, they are truly unique. Combination of long-leaf pine sandhill, sand pine scrub, some oak scrub as well, upland hardwood hammock, South Florida flatwoods, and also some ephemeral marshes that used to be on the property, as well as a bay head. When I say bay head, I'm talking about an area that typically will discharge water from the Florida aquifer. And area that you see in the very center, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or not, but area, anyway, area in the very center is a substantial bay head that actually adds water to Little Bullfrog Creek, which eventually connects into Bullfrog Creek, which then goes to Tampa Bay. So there's your water quality connection there. So after 1938, sometime in the 1960s and 70s, about 80% of the natural habitat on the site was cleared. That's the bad thing. Here's the good thing. The topography on the site is still intact. So this property was not used for row crops or any real intensive type agriculture. Secondly, the upland soils are still intact on the site. So those two things are critical when we look at restoring sites from, say, open pasture to their native upland habitats. You'll also see on here some very strange-looking features, almost like little dots or bubbles. Those are aquaculture areas, old fish farms, and those will be restored to ephemeral wetlands, freshwater wetlands, as I'll describe shortly. So we talk about restoration potential. Well, the great thing about this property, as I just mentioned, is it's easily restorable. Soils are still intact, topography's still intact, and this is something that we've become very, very good at over the last two decades. Taking an area such as portion you see on the, the left, 2005, this is 30 acres on the adjacent Baum Scrub property that was nothing but open pasture. The native habitats had been cleared decades earlier. So we took that pasture, and through a combination of utilizing our staff as well as a qualified restoration contractor, we started from the ground up. So we did seeding of grasses, flowers, forbs, herbs, and did that basically over the entire 30-acre site. From there, we planted shrubs, trees. You can see two long-leaf pines in the background. The shrub in the foreground is a turkey oak. So in a matter of eight years, we took something that, from an ecological standpoint, had minimal value, and then took it to where a variety of sandhill and scrub species could actually thrive. And if I showed you a picture 10 years later, in 2023, just a tremendous difference. This is actually now becoming a true sandhill forest on the property. So I want to stress that we have the ability to do this. This is not some new technique. And again, between county staff and our contractors, it's something that we're very comfortable So ecological significance to the county's ELAP program. Why is this property so important, you know? It's only 450 acres. Why, why is this more important than anything else? Well, first of all, it meets all of the ELAP strategic plan criteria. It expands the existing Baum Scrub Preserve boundary by approximately 25%. It functions as a wildlife corridor, in fact, a major wildlife corridor, between both the Baum Scrub Preserve and the Stacy R. White and Baum Boyette Scrub Preserves to the north. It is the largest and highest-ranked approved ELAP site for Xeric connectivity that remains undeveloped within the entire county. That's not a staff perspective. That's from the University of Florida, from a study they did in 2018. Acquisition will allow for current management activities on the adjacent Baum Scrub Preserve to continue without alteration, in particular, prescribed burning. And then finally, this supports the 2018 ELAP audit recommendation that future acquisition efforts focus on approved ELAP sites that are located within or near the urban services boundary. In other words, those are the areas where there's a higher threat of development. So we want to acquire those first before they're gone forever. And finally, just real quick, some economic benefits to Hillsborough County.
Quickly. Quickly, please.
I'm sorry?
I said quickly, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, sir. So wetland mitigation, opportunity there to create about 60 acres of either internal county wetland mitigation or external. Gopher tortoise restocking, we're working right now with Tampa International Airport to relocate 100 tortoises to the adjacent Baum Scrub Preserve. We feel like this 450 acres will complement that very, very well moving forward. And then finally, ecosystem services. The property provides about $3.3 million of annual ecosystem services benefits to the county. Again, that's not accounting, according to county staff. That's according to EPA's H2O beta model, which incorporates flood protection, usable air, usable water, and stable climate. That's, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Forrest. Commissioner Kemp?
I'd like to move approval.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. Commissioner Kemp, second. Commissioner Myers?
I just think there's one comment, and I know, Forrest, we learned quite a bit, but you said one comment when you were briefing me that I think is important, in that you would give up a year of your life, did you say?
If I could go back to 1938 and stand on that boundary and look at this, yeah, I'd give up a year of my life. It would be that amazing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and the reason this is here, because we're dealing with this, what we're paying would be above appraised value, correct? And then I always tell people that the value of property is really what someone's willing to pay for it. And if there are people willing to pay more for this property, I do see a danger in development because it's so close to our ELAP property. The financing for this, though, this, this will be bonded with long-term bonds, is that correct? And then we'll have some type of budget amendments? Could you say it real quick?
Sure. So the idea for this is that since the closing is scheduled for June the 27th, which is right down the road, we will use interim commercial paper for probably 30 to 60 days. And at that point, we'll be coming back to the board with a request for a brand-new bond issue.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to support it. Thanks.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Forrest.
Thank you.
Next item?
Thank you. The next item are board appointments, and it looks like Luanne is here, coming in for
Good morning, Commissioners. We have three boards to make appointments to today. Your first board is your Housing Finance Authority. There are three vacancies. Commissioner Hagan.
Four, five, and six.
Commissioner Myers.
Two, three, four.
Commissioner Cameron Sapita.
Two, three, four.
Commissioner Cohen.
Two, three, four.
Commissioner Owen.
Two, three, four.
Commissioner Kemp.
Two, three, four.
Commissioner Wiesel.
Three, five, six.
It will be Edward Buzansky, Frank DeBeau's, and David Hollis. Your next board is your Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee. Please choose two. Commissioner Hagan.
Seven and nine.
Commissioner Myers.
Seven and nine.
Commissioner Cameron Sapita.
Ten and sixteen. Ten and sixteen.
This is anti-bullying. Commissioner Cohen.
Seven and nine.
Commissioner Owen.
Seven and nine.
Commissioner Kemp.
Seven and nine.
Commissioner Wiesel.
Seven and nine.
It will be Rhonda Flowers and Shannon Harris. Your last board is your Public Library Board. There are two ballots. We'll do one district at a time. For District One, please choose one. Commissioner Hagan.
Choose one. Seventeen.
Commissioner Myers.
Seventeen.
Commissioner Cameron Sapita.
Sixteen.
Commissioner Owen.
Seventeen.
Commissioner Kemp.
Seventeen.
Sorry, Commissioner Cohen, I skipped you.
Commissioner, excuse me, thirteen.
Commissioner Wiesel.
Twelve.
It will be Abigail St. Clair. Your next is District Two. Please choose three.
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Commissioner Myers.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty-three.
That's a different district.
Just in District Two.
Twenty-two.
Commissioner Cameron Sapita.
Nineteen, twenty, and eighteen.
Commissioner Cohen.
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Commissioner Cohen.
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-two.
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-two.
Commissioner Wiesel.
Nineteen, nineteen.
Nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
It'll be Robert Argus. And Phyllis Albert. And Mary Kate Downing. And then your last is District Three, and that will be Elizabeth Hawley.
Can we have a motion confirmed?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second, Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Oh, sorry about that.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, next item?
Thank you. The next item is a staff report. This is item G1. This is to receive the follow-up report on towing MBO's immobilization, hard for me to say today, rates in the Hillsborough County Towing Ordinance. And Joe Gross will present this item. And Whitney Green is also here from the county attorney's office.
And I'll make this brief. Joe Gross, Code Enforcement. You'll recall, in February, we met and talked about the towing rates. We were given some instructions. So one of them was to kind of expand the other jurisdictions to see what the towing rates involve. Look at the signage to make sure, I don't know if it's forwarded, the signage issue, improve the ability to report concerns, examine the use of credit cards, the feasibility of that, and also overall, some ordinance revisions to include best practices. Real quick background, as you recall, the PTC was dissolved in 2017. Ordinances were enacted to both regulate towing as well as establish some maximum rates. It also put in some other things for the industry. And our regulatory compliance section of Code Enforcement is the one who currently ensures adherence with the trespass towing and immobilization. So we took the original three nearby jurisdictions that had most recently updated their rates, and we expanded it to include some more even current rates from other large jurisdictions to include Broward County, Miami Dade, and Orange County, which literally just earlier this year has updated their rates. Still feel what was requested is consistent with what the other jurisdictions are imposing. As far as the parking signage issue, so we've got kind of two. One is the signs at the property from where you may be towed. We did verify that our code mirrors that of the statute. And also, when we looked at probably about a dozen different jurisdictions, it was consistent with those. Our code goes a little beyond that, and at the storage facility, when you actually go to recover your vehicle, which is not statutorily required, we have some consumer disclosure information. The rates must be posted, they must be legible, copies must be furnished upon request, and it also outlines some of the legal rights and how to make a complaint if a consumer wanted to. We were asked to improve our own website, how to, the ease in making those complaints. We've established that. It's, it's pretty easy now, not only to find the websites that are related or webpages, but also to lodge your complaint. And next, I'm going to let Whitney talk a little bit about credit cards.
Thanks, Joe. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As the boards are aware from our previous report, the current ordinance does not require tow companies to accept credit cards. When we expanded our research to other jurisdictions, a few of which are on the slide in front of you, we found that all of them required the acceptance of credit cards, and some also allow the servicer to charge a 3% credit card processing fee to the consumer if they opt to use a credit card for that method of payment. Making credit card acceptance mandatory would require an amendment to the ordinance. That amendment could also address the credit card processing fee, either allowing or prohibiting collection of the fee. An ordinance amendment which requires a public hearing would be a separate process from amending the resolution to address the rates that Joe was talking about. The board also asked for a review of the ordinance compared to best practices from other jurisdictions. And as further detailed in the report, the county's ordinance provides significant consumer protections compared to some of the neighboring jurisdictions. But there are other areas that could be explored in improving those protections, including addressing some consensual tow scenarios, ideas from the industry and staff to improve the ordinance based on their experiences and feedback, and updates that address recent and pending changes to state law. And now Joe's just going to go over the staff options that are presented in the report.
And I did want to mention, we do have the industry here, as well as the Hillsborough County Towing Association present, and they, we did have a chance to meet with them in March and kind of go over some of these things. So to get back to the options, you've got the, the rates that have been proposed. You can accept, modify, or decline. We do include in there the opportunity to periodically review the rates. We don't want to get as far back as we did this go-around. And also to amend the ordinance to accept the credit cards, and also address any other concerns that we come up with mutually between the two, the staff and industry. And of course, we're going to always continue to look, not only to improve the ability to have the consumer engage with us, but also to make them aware that these rates are in place and there to protect them. That's what we have for you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
In the interest of time, I'll, I'll be brief. I would like to go ahead and do all of the things that have been suggested to us, both accept the proposed towing rate changes and amend the ordinance to accept credit cards. And it's my understanding from the county attorney that we could run both of those processes essentially concurrently with one another and do them together over the course of the next three meetings or so. Is that right?
Yes, Commissioner. If that's your direction to affect both the rates and the ordinance, we could have that all concluded by the second meeting in May.
I think that would be great, and I'd like to make a motion to do that. And I would like to just take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Kemp before she speaks for her advocacy on support of accepting credit cards. There have been a lot of people that have called me about that over the years, and I'm really glad that could be incorporated into this ordinance.
And I'll second the motion. I know we want to do this with due speed. I know we want to do this with due speed. There's just one thing about the rate changes in the suggested language, I believe, which was to review them every two years. And I suggested that was, although we have gone a long time, and we certainly need to put something in there. My suggestion was every three years, because that's what we do with our other standard, for instance, impact fees or others. And I think the legislature may have said four years, but I think that's too long. But I think three years makes more sense in standard review.
If that is a friendly amendment, I will accept that to the motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion to approve, or motion to go down the path for amending the rates and the necessary ordinance change to add, to mandate credit cards being allowed to be taken by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Kemp. And I just want to say that I support all these changes. I want to make sure that our staff's also considering any improvements that can be made to strengthen our regulations, to eradicate the bad actors. I know in the past, at least it appears to me, that when the PTC existed, that PTC had a little more authority. So I think maybe whatever we can do to review, what we can do internally to give, you know, our staff the authority they need, or any change we need to make to give them the tools they need to increase enforcement. So with that, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thanks, Joe. Bonnie, I think we got future issues and then a consent item.
Yes, sir. Future discussion items.
Yep. Any future discussion items? Commissioner Owen?
Yes, I just have one. It'll be real fast. This deals with Ordinance 2117, Construction Apprenticeship Program Ordinance. Commissioner Kemp, I know you worked on this one. It's a great ordinance, and I know it's a couple of years old. There were some things, when I took a deep dive into it, that I would like to tweak. But upon talking to staff about it, my understanding is in September, they were already planning on coming back with a report to kind of tell us where we're at and how the program's working. So my future item, and I've discussed this with staff on timing, and they think it's okay, is to direct staff to bring back a report on the county's Construction Apprenticeship Program on June 7, 2023, which will include a discussion of the lessons learned to date and opportunities for improvement. And that's all I have.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, we have a lot of the future up today. And I wanted to request to direct staff to bring back information about Career Source and the status of that at this time. For those of you who haven't been on this board for a period of time, I can only imagine Commissioner Hagan's history on this. But at one time, the, more recently since I've been on it, just before I got on, the Pinellas and Hillsborough Career Source programs were merged, and it turned into a, which you may remember from the papers. It was very scandalous. I guess the FBI investigated because there was a CEO in charge, and there were all kinds of allegations. There was a, the two, Hillsborough and Pinellas decided not to no longer stay merged. It was months and months of contention and issues. The FBI, I guess, never charged the former CEO with some of the, all the allegations that were made with that. We are still, Hillsborough County has been on the hook for, I think, a million dollars as we wait for insurance to cover the losses that the federal government has held us accountable for. The same thing, I understand, has happened to Pinellas. So those are still under, we still haven't gotten our insurance coverage of that at this time. And already, there's a move afoot to, I don't know why, merge these again. And the only reason I had kind of heard this, but the reason I became aware is because I read it in the Tampa Bay Times that the Pinellas County Commissioners were very upset about this possibility and thought it was a poor idea. But I just asked for an update on the status of this. There are implications in the article. I didn't know whether that was correct or not, that if the county commissions got involved and opposed it, that it might be something that we could stave from happening. But it does not seem to be. We've been there, done that, and it was terrible. And so I just would like to find out what is going on with that, and I think we need to get engaged at this point.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. And given the time, I will try to be brief on this. Commissioner Wessel and I were treated to a presentation on Monday at Tampa Bay Water that raised some alarming news about water consumption in South Hillsborough County. The South Central Hillsborough Regional Well Field, since March, has been pumping at a running average well over what was projected, in some cases as much as 10 million gallons a day over what was projected. And while Tampa Bay Water will be able to handle this through the dry season, and this is something that will hopefully come to an end in June, once the rains start, it is a somewhat alarming spike. And it was suggested to us at the Tampa Bay Water meeting that we might want to take some additional measures to address this issue. And I was going to suggest, number one, that we receive a report on May 1 at our next meeting about water consumption and the efforts that the county is making to communicate that people need to be watering on their day and following the rules. As everyone knows, we had watering restrictions in place up until January 1 that confined watering to one day a week south of the Alafire River. Those restrictions were lifted. And, you know, assuming that we have a normal rainy season, we will get through this dry period. And the overpumping of the well, according to Tampa Bay Water, while it is pushing the limits of our permitted capacity, they do very, very serious monitoring around the well, and they're not seeing any adverse effects from it or hearing any reports of any sort of impact to any of the surrounding wells. But notwithstanding that, we have an obligation, I think, to do everything we possibly can to make sure that we watch our water consumption. So I want to ask for that report on the first. And I also do want to ask that between now and then, we increase our conservation messaging, and we make sure to get out the word to people that they need to check on what days they're allowed to water. Tampa Bay Water mentioned that they see that there's, and I think they got this information from Hillsborough County, that they see that there's watering going on on Sundays. And that indicates that people are not necessarily following the days when they're supposed to be watering. So I want to ask for that to come back on the first. And I also, on another item, wanted to ask our staff to work with billboard owners in Hillsborough County that are interested in pursuing an agreement to convert static billboards to digital billboards. We've done that in the past. I know Hillsborough County's done it in the past. I voted on this when I was on the Tampa City Council. And what it is, is allowing billboard owners to essentially trade in a certain number of static billboards for digital billboards. And digital billboards have some major advantages. Number one, there would be significantly less of them. But number two, they can be programmed during emergencies and during evacuations to be used for other purposes. So I'm not going to ask for a report back. I'm just going to simply ask for staff to work with entities in the county that are interested in doing this. And if they're successful in negotiating any of these type of agreements, that they would bring that back to the Board of County Commissioners for us to make a final decision on. So thank you very much.
And on the one water report, I think you said May 1, but our meeting's on May 3.
I meant May 3, thank you, yeah.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Mine is regarding Brightline. We know we hear talk about the high-speed rail between Orlando and Tampa. And I would like to request that staff bring back to this board a report on Brightline within 90 days with a specific focus on the connection points in Tampa.
Good with that? Okay. Okay, we have one last item, the consent agenda item that was pulled.
Yes, sir. The next item is Item A4. This is to approve the Community Development Block Grant Funding Agreement with Enterprise Latinas. Ms. Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator, will present this item.
Good morning. Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator. Good to be here this morning. This item really is to approve the, I'm sorry, A4, approve the Community Development Block Grant Funding between Hillsborough County and Enterprise Latinas for the public facility improvements to the property at 5128 South State Road 674 in Waumama, in an amount not to exceed $931,318. This funding is Phase 2 of the Waumama Opportunity Center's interior and exterior rehabilitation, which includes waterline connections to the modular units for bathrooms, installation of a digital street signage, resurfacing of the parking lot area, and creation of an outdoor pavilion space for community events. These improvements will improve the facility to continue to aid area low-income residents to improve their quality of life. To also approve the form of the Lura mortgage and promissory note associated with the property, which will secure the county's investment for use as described in the agreement for a minimum of 20 years, and C, to approve the authorization of Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Chair to execute the documents herein. This agreement will be funded with $931,318 of the HUD Community Development Block Grant Program.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cameron Sapita?
Yes, so my concern was this, the amount that they're asking for is just under a million dollars. And they, as they've listed there, things like connecting water to the modular, which I've been there, and it's just, just right, so many feet from the building where they already have, obviously, running water and all that in the building they currently have. So, and also, there are digital street signage, resurfing of a parking lot, and an outdoor pavilion for community events. And I just think that's an exorbitant amount of money that they're asking for, for these things. It's the amount that concerns me. And also, when we have in Hillsborough County, our Hillsborough County Public Safety Operations Complex that needs to be upgraded, we need additional buildings for that. Due to the growth we have here, it's much too small. Need to be concerned about the, there's so many other areas where we could be spending our money. We need fire stations, fire rescue here in Hillsborough County. I mean, this money could be spent in other areas that we really, really are behind on getting things done. Really need to be done, urgently need to be done, actually, for the way that, how we're growing so rapidly. And of course, sidewalks, so many other things that we need here in Hillsborough County that we are so behind on, I mean, years behind on. And I think that's an exorbitant amount of money to ask for.
Yes, ma'am. If I can, explain the process.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm so sorry.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
No, that's my.
Just hold on, hold on. Commissioner Wessel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Mrs. Howell. You have a difficult job portioning out these CDBG dollars. The matrix for them is just as disorganized as you would expect from the federal government. I mean, it's awful. So kudos to you. I do feel like, though, on this one, I asked for some documentation from you that you actually, unlike some other programs that we do, you actually track these organizations' performance. And October, November, December, January, February, all of those months, their progress reports that this organization has already received a substantial amount of CDBG dollars in an initial funding. All of those numbers that they were supposed to meet were zero. That their provisions to the community were zero, that they met 0% of their goal. They barely legged in some in March. For me, I don't look at, I've heard the phrase, "But this is federal dollars." It's all green, and it's all taxpayers' money. And this is about scrutinizing, and I think that this is a great opportunity for us to consider that we might need to more heavily scrutinize even these federal dollars to the organizations that we're giving them to, making sure that taxpayer funding is being utilized to work for taxpayers in the community. And I'm absolutely going to be voting to deny the dispersments of these funds. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, well, I'll start, first of all, by saying this was kind of a surprise. And I know that for the organization as well. And so I'd like to make a motion to continue and put this on to the next meeting so that at least the organization could be here as well to answer these concerns. But in terms of, and just to explain a little with the, so that's a motion.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you. And so the other that I'd like to understand here, first of all, this is CDBG money, which is money that is allocated to serve certain communities. It's, can you just explain a little bit about what the matrix is for that? Who is eligible in what ways?
Okay, sure. So the dollars come from the Housing and Urban Development from HUD. And so these dollars are for low-to-moderate income households or low-to-moderate income areas, and they can only be utilized in those areas. HUD has a very strict tracking process as well. And there's a very strict process that we go through. We go through a five-year consolidated plan to create the priorities, which becomes the priorities for Hillsborough County. We utilize a third party to do the consolidated plan. I want to say it was done in 2021. And so that plan is for five years. After those priorities are designated, then there's five action plans that go along with that. Those action plans then consist of the priorities that are included in that five-year plan. So all of these projects right here, creating economic opportunity, serving our very vulnerable, extremely low-income populations, affordable housing projects, and including our Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area, all of those are included in the con plan, but all of the activities are evident and mirrored in those priorities as well.
And for instance, just in terms of, okay, so first of all, this is, there would, this couldn't just go to any area, these funds, in Hillsborough County. This has to go in certain areas and speak to underserved populations and serving them. They have to make a, you have a certain amount of funding, and then they have to make a grant application in order to get that funding, correct?
Yes, ma'am. They have to go to low-income census tract areas. And so those are identified by HUD, not by us. And then they're tracked, and we have to put that information in and make sure that all of the locations are eligible for that specific tract as well.
And these are community groups that put in these applications for what the community group, you know, the services are giving or priorities in service for them to do?
Correct. And so the procurement department manages the RFP process. They put out that process annually. And then we get requests for proposals submitted from various different organizations. Our staff doesn't dictate what other organizations can ask for specifically. We do have some. We do have some guidelines in terms of creating estimates, ensuring that the scope of work is consistent with fair and marketable prices, and so on and so forth.
So, and you, for instance, if, for the work that's done, let's say they, you know, they put in there for a certain amount for sewage and wastewater, or paving, or whatever. Do you, then, this money comes through the federal government, and you judge these applications. If you award an application, do you check to make sure the money's been done on that? Do they have to account for the resources spent?
Absolutely. All of the grants are reimbursable. So, the organization has to first spend the money, and then they're reimbursed. And so, we go through a process where we look at all payment requests and ensure that all the documentation and everything is together in that payment request. We take it through several, several different stages, and then it's submitted over to the clerk's office for payment.
And I would just, in terms of enterprising Latinas and the Wy Mamma Opportunity Center, I don't know how many of you have been there, or how many times that you've been there. But, you know, I've gone a number of times for their events. I've learned a little bit about the center. And I had called up to find out information, just to get some background and, and some numbers. So, I'm not sure what happened with that filing there. But they serve, they have, on record, serving 2,000 people a year. They have active programs going in women in construction, certified nursing assistance, food protection, business training, literacy programs, fluency programs, digital literacy. They have 45 computers. They are open day and night doing training and lifting up people in the community and helping them. This, this is really important work that they do. And this community block grant money is something that they made application to, that the application was judged among other applications, of which we have that process here, which there were apparently seven applications. And all of the applications were approved in the amounts that then their people, their organizations at the county is, is, has been working with and, and monitor and, and do some of the work that the county, in a, in a different time, might have been doing some of these programs. But instead, are, we have certain not-for-profits that work in these areas and make application and demonstrate their value, need, success, and participation, and what they bring to the community. And this is one of them. But I think we really need to let the, this was years of a process, years of them making the application, following up, being vetted by a staff committee, and being, making this award, and then being monitored about how the award is spent. So, I think it would be, and I would like, in our best interest, to allow for the enterprising Latinas to come and, and respond to this, and respond to what's, what's being said here, and have an opportunity in terms of this award to, to talk about their program. So, that's why I made my motion. And I hope we, we can allow that to happen.
And just a point of clarity, we didn't receive our HUD a grant. So, the actual HUD grant that comes through the BLCC was executed in December of 2022. And so, the, the project itself was, was a fairly new project, a relatively new organization, if you will. Some of the organizations we've worked with for years, like Lighthouse for the Blind. And so, they delayed actually kind of beginning the process, I guess, because of their own uncertainty. And so, they really kind of started working to put things together. And it has taken them a little bit longer than I would have liked, to be, to be honest with you. You know, we all watch these processes very closely. We report, we report to HUD, we report to the board, and to the county administrator as per requested as well. And so, this is the only Hispanic-led organization that is doing work down in the south part of the county. I think it's also important to add to this conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Howell. I'll speak last. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you. And I'm just a little more curious with what's been said here today with, with that process. You had mentioned a, there's a third party that, and I don't know the answer to this, it's not rhetorical. There's a third party that we contract out that actually does a study on everyone that's, that's made application, or I hear you wrong?
No, sir. No, sir. We use the, we use, use a third party to do the consolidated planning process. That's a long kind of in-depth process to create this five-year plan. So, they go out in the community, they do the community meetings, they meet with, with all the community members, gather all the data, collate all of that for the department, and then we bring that report back to the board.
Okay. And that, and that was my next question, because I think Commissioner Kemp was saying how you judge the applications. When, when she's saying you, that's your board, will then make that determination if these funds are appropriate? Or can you expand on that?
No, actually, no one in the Affordable Housing Services Department has a vote on these projects. We, we utilize staff members throughout the county, those with grand experience that understands the process. And then they comprise of, they have a panel, and they review all of these projects as they come in, and they score those projects.
Okay. Because, yeah, that was what confused me, because it, because I, and I don't want to put words in Commissioner Kemp's mouth. I thought she says, you judge the applications. That's not, okay, that's not how that's worded.
Not the case.
Yeah, I mean, and this is in my district, and I, gosh, you know, I'm, I can, $1 million. I mean, to me, this, this is upgrades to a facility. And, and this organization has that opportunity, I think, to be here. They actually spoke this morning in public comments. But I certainly don't want to, want to be involved in a situation where someone doesn't think that they have had a fair opportunity to be heard. So, you know, reluctantly, I'll, I'll support that, because I would like to, to hear from them directly. But gosh, I can just think of $1 million in my district. I could think of so many, many more ways than upgrading a facility to use this to create more economic opportunity. But, but I'm going to reluctantly support that to give them an opportunity to come here and be heard, because I think that's important.
So, I just had one quick question.
Go ahead.
Yes. So, you're saying you cannot use those funds to build a fire station, fire rescue in those low-income areas?
No, no, ma'am. I'm not saying that. I'm saying the funds can be used for several different, several different things. But they have to be in low-to-moderate income areas certified by HUD.
Right. So, it was the amount that was concerning me, that amount which could be used, again, to help with other areas in those low-income neighborhoods. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mostel?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Ms. Howell, you said that, and you said that you review these. So, I'm wondering what, what would be a trigger for you to say this program's failing, specifically because some of the testimony that we heard was that they're supporting and training thousands of people. But they themselves, with notarized signatures on some of them, are providing you documents saying zeros. And then some of their actual comments on our official reports are that they, in fact, can't find low-income people to meet their requirements for this training. So, when those agencies are self-reporting that they are, they're not meeting the requirements, and that they can't find the individuals that they were hoping to serve, is there ever a trigger where you say, hey, maybe this is not the right program? Especially when they're self-identifying that they've, that they're not able to do it?
Well, in, in actuality, we review all of, all of the reports that come in. And so, with this particular project right here, they've really only kind of been doing it for three months, because there was a delay with us signing that HUD agreement as well. And that's no fault of theirs, and it's no fault of ours. It's just that HUD sent the agreement in, in late, late November, early part of December. And so, we only had one meeting in December. And so, we watch the, the projects very, very closely, sir. We understand that some of the organizations have more capacity than others do. We also offer capacity building. Oftentimes, we have grassroots organizations that are providing support, providing really good support out in the community, really have a pulse on the community. And so, when the board says that this is, when we have an approved agreement, then rarely, rarely, in my entire 30 years of working in the public sector, have we, have I come back and said, no, we shouldn't do this project. It has been, it has been initiated in other cases by other forces, sometimes by administration, sometimes by commissioners, but never really by staff.
Okay. Because this organization was going to, through different mechanisms, get millions of dollars from the county. So, it would seem that we need to be ever more judicious in scrutinizing where that money is going.
Thank you. I'd just like to share some, some comments. Back in 1988, I joined the county, and I had the opportunity to work in Housing and Community Development Department. And at that time, we were receiving the CDBG funds from HUD, which allows various communities to be able to do just what we're talking about now, where they had a competitive bid for these CDBG dollars. They can do sidewalk improvements, renovation to community centers. Matter of fact, they can build a new community center, because HUD designated that area as a low-to-moderate-income area, and only those funds could be spent in those areas. And it still applies today. Now, in this situation, I think we want to change our format. What we're asking is the nonprofit to come in and explain prior to us approving. And we have already approved other nonprofits. Am I right, Ms. Howell, to receive these dollars? And we did not ask them to come in, because the dollars that we receive from HUD, specifically for CDBG, can go into any community that has been designated by HUD and approved by this county, for those funds to be spent in those communities. Am I right, Ms. Howell?
All right. Yes, ma'am. This action plan went before the board about, I want to say it was, the final hearing was in July of 2022. And then we send that, we send that action plan, that approved action plan by the board, up to Housing and Urban Development for approval. And so, I want to say they approved it, and I want to say around October of 2022. And then we got the final agreement that executed that action plan in December of 2022. And, and that's when we began to take all of the projects, or the agreements, really, back to the board for agreement. And this one was delayed because we were, just a little bit, because we were going through some back and forth, talking with administration, and just trying to make sure that everybody was comfortable in the process.
So, I'd like to make a motion that, that we go ahead and accept A4 for approval. And if we want the Latino groups to come and give a presentation, so that we do not change our process of how we do business, when we have a competitive bid out there and all of the nonprofits are bidding for services within our communities to support low-income communities.
I'll withdraw my motion and, and support that.
Point of order then. So, you, Madam Chair, I mean, you, you just have moved for just approval of this, of this particular item?
Yes. And the report can come later, if we want to hear from the Latino group, but not based on, because we're changing our format. Am I correct, Ms. Howell? If we deny this, to come back, are we going to bring our other seven, or six in to hear from them? I'm just asking the board.
Yeah, well, if I would, I mean, my answer to that question would be yes. You know, the, well, and I understand that, I understand the issues surrounding that. But listen, I'm a newly-elected county commissioner. What you're asking me to do, what they're asking me to do, this is my district, is to put my stamp of approval, for me to agree to, to this particular item. At this point, where I look at it, when you're asking me, where could these dollars be appropriately used, if they could be used in, in this particular area, which is my district, I can think of a lot of different ways that we can utilize these funds. And from what the testimony, or what I'm getting here today, is that there are other opportunities to use these funds. This item is being brought before this board of county commissioners, not one from two years ago, not one from October. So, so, you know, you made your motion. I'll, I'll sit back and listen or make my vote. Thank you.
When was the competitive process over with, Ms. Howell, that was relating to this? Because this was a competitive process. Am I correct?
Yes, it was. I want to say it was probably in May 2022, that the competitive process was over.
Okay.
As a, just as a point of information for Mr. Vanar Vandersdale, so sorry. It's actually the only name more difficult than mine. Part of our new policy that was when all of these confusing motions, right, you know what I'm referring to. So, we made it to where that we now need to clear the slate and say clearly what we're about to vote on, and what that yes or no vote would mean. I, of course, which I'm going to be a hard no. So, everyone needs to understand which one we're voting on.
And just again, my concern was the amount that it was for going toward, for that organization was just the amount. So, but we can go ahead and vote.
Do you want me to read back the motion, or at least how, as I heard it? Move approval of item A4?
Yes.
As in, and have the enterprising Latinas come back and make a presentation at a later date?
Yes, I just correct. That was my motion, seconded by Commissioner Kemp. So, here, no.
And everything else was withdrawn, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So, let's record our votes.
Motion failed, 3 to 3. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Owen and Mostel voted no.
Okay. Okay, we have two people who are still here that, from public comment this morning, if it's at the chair's discretion.
Point of order. Don't we have to dispose of this in some way? I, I mean, it, it would seem to me that a motion would be appropriate to do something else with it.
Exactly.
And until something passes, we have to, we have to, we have to deal with it.
I'd like to do a motion to continue.
Okay.
And have a presentation, and really understand this much better. I'll, I'll just say two. I do not want to be, I mean, to, to go, I can't even imagine how many CDBG grants to look at and decide all these issues. I mean, we, to, to drill down like this on the particulars. But I suppose it looks like we will here. And I think that that is a really, you know, not, not something that, that we should be doing at this level.
It's only the amount that's being questioned.
Parliamentary inquiry.
And only on this particular one, not the other ones. Yes.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Commissioner Mostel, I need to recognize you first. Hold on.
Well, a proper parliamentary inquiry, I can, I can impose if I feel like it's urgent, correct, clerk?
No, you can't. I need to recognize you first.
I can, clerk.
And Commissioner Kemp was speaking.
I can, correct clerk?
Staff.
Yes, I know.
Please don't respond. We need to finish with Commissioner Kemp. We're going to be respectful, and I'm going to recognize everyone that wants, wishes to speak.
There are Robert rules of orders that should be followed, just to make that clear for the record.
Commissioner Kemp?
I, I just have that motion. I'll just let it, that right now.
Second. Okay. Can you state the motion? Because I missed the motion going back and forth, trying to get order.
I'll, I'll move to continue this and have a- I'll move to continue this and have a more full presentation at the following meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, seconded by Commissioner Owen. Please record your vote.
Mr. Vannersdell, can you confirm that under Robert's rules, that when a motion fails to pass, doesn't it in fact die on the floor?
Yes, but that doesn't prevent another motion. But yes, that is correct.
But the motion to, for the removal of this, of this A4 is dead, correct?
No. The motion to approve it was dead, but he could, a subsequent motion is acceptable.
Okay.
Please record your vote.
Motion failed, three to three. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Owen, and Winstone voted no.
Well, we just asked staff to bring this back at the May meeting.
I don't believe that that's the appropriate action. I'd like to make a motion to deny at this point.
We have a mo, Ms. Howell, can you come back up, please? Just want to ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is something that's already been submitted to HUD in the plan, that has been submitted to HUD, and we're waiting on approval by our board.
No, no, ma'am. This is a project that was submitted to HUD last, last, or last July, really. And so this was already an approved action plan. And they, and they're, each action plan consists of several different projects within that plan. And so this has already been submitted by HUD, to HUD, is an approved part of the action plan currently. And that's the 2022, '23 action plan.
Did we get that board, where we stand with that? Ms. Winstone?
Right, but the board could, it's not like the money will become unavailable. The board will have to make a decision how to use the money in the future.
Okay. That's what I want to be sure of.
Typically.
Yes, so, point of order. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Ms. Howell?
Typically, if a project, for whatever reason, does not move forward, then we take those, those funds and we, we include it in another RFP process, and then we do what we call a substantial amendment. And we bring that substantial amendment back to the board for approval. So that is a process. This is not the first time that a project has not moved forward for whatever reason.
Okay. Commissioner Owen?
So I don't think, Commissioner Winstone, that your motion to deny is even necessary at this point. So I think.
So you're going to withdraw your motion?
I withdraw.
Okay. Okay. So we'll just wait to hear?
We'll come before you with other options.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, we have two speakers, one to speak for public hearing. I see Gil, I don't, we have two speakers, a second.
Sorry, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, I believe it's speakers number 10 and 11 that were on off the agenda for public comment. And Mr. Gil Machine is the first one.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers, for giving me the opportunity to speak. It's been a long morning. I know you're all very tired. You've done some good work. I also want to express my condolences to the Winchester family, who I do not know, unimaginable tragedy. My name is Gil Machine. I reside at 6006 North Gunlock Avenue, Hillsborough County, zip code 33614. I'm here this morning to report and request your assistance with a very dangerous, albeit small intersection of Heims and Idewall Avenue. I'm here today because I've exhausted every means available to me. My most recent attempt to secure resolution of this matter began in July of 2021 and was assigned case number SR486550. Research then conducted by your traffic engineering department identified 60 accidents in a five-year period at this one intersection, 60, okay? One, one a month averaging. And that has, and according to the department, traffic department, they consider this has risen to a level of significant concern. Since 2021, there have been more accidents, citizens have experienced serious vehicle damages, personal injuries, and I wouldn't be surprised if life, if loss of life is concerned. I'm here today because no action other than reports of continuous monitoring for over two years has been demonstrated. The problem exists, has existed for quite some time before 2021. And the reason for this is because there's several factors that are associated with this. The primary one being Heims Avenue has become an alternate route to Dale Mabry during the morning and traffic, morning and afternoon rush periods. There's no speed limit control for either period in the afternoon period, and in the afternoon periods, long lines of vehicles traveling north form a block view for drivers attempting to turn onto Heims Avenue from Idewall Avenue. Representatives of the traffic engineering department have periodically communicated me, with me through email, informing that this matter is being elevated, and they continue to monitor the intersection. However, the last email on March 2nd, 2023, has led me to believe that this case may be on the path to closure without resolve. I see this as but one solution that rises above all others, and that is a traffic light. I suggest a traffic light, even activated only when someone enters the intersection from Idewall, thereby minimizing the disruption of the traffic flow on Heims Avenue. This would be the sole light between Lambright and Hillsborough Avenue. Conversely speaking, between Hillsborough Avenue and MLK, there are two, not counting Hillsborough and MLK, there are two streetlights, one for Jesuit High, which I support, and one at the Tampa Business Center. Neither of these two are four-way intersections with the accident record of Heims and Idewall. Taken it further between MLK and Cypress Avenue.
Thank you, Gil. But I'm going to refer. Kim, would you stand up in the back? Gil, could you see Kim? Like, turn around, Gil. That's Kim. Can you please see her? She will assist you with traffic. Thank you so much. Okay, our next speaker is Denise Selsky.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Denise Selsky. I live in Citrus Park, and the sole reason for me being here today is to get the, oops, sorry. Did you hear that? Do I start over? Or is to get the dead-end dirt road that I live on put in my name. This is, road is an unmaintained, or was an unmaintained county road, and it's marked with the blue street sign that says private road. I'm a disabled veteran with 20, 21 years' service in the Navy and the Navy Reserves. I've owned this property for 28 years. When I was building my house in 1997, I had to make the road. There was nothing there, just to get back to it. Mrs. Gibson, who lived in the log cabin in front of me, she put in to have the end of this road vacated. But the county, the survey actually from 1998 shows that it was vacated. Well, for some reason, all of a sudden, it's not vacated. Years passed, and this just keeps overgrowing, overgrowing, overgrowing. The trees are falling into my yard, just barely missing my house. The county wouldn't clean it. They wouldn't pay for my fence. They wouldn't pay for my gorgeous, big, huge clay pots. Mosquito control can no longer get down there. And people are dumping their garbage. Sorry, I compensated this much smaller from this furniture. So anyway, in 2001, the shops at Citrus Park went up, and they put in a fence past the property and a solid brick wall that holds nothing but water. After that, apartment complex went in, and they put in a retention pond. So there's absolutely zero place for this road to go through. The, I have to pay to fix everything. I was in a wheelchair for quite a while, and the county wouldn't fix the road. So FEMA came down and milled the road. This is, it's a tenth of a mile, the road, which is like, you know, over 2,000 feet. So very nice man from Public Works came down, and they had some cement slabs they were not going to ever use. He came down and he built me a nice platform to put, to park on. And then my neighbor bought a carport and put up for me. Years go by, therapy, whatever, I can walk again, but not without pain. And I fixed my fence. I got my fence fixed, did all that, and now there's two ponds and a retention wall. County came in and told me I've paid for vacating three times, okay? It's never been done. Meanwhile, the people next to me dump all their garbage down there. I've had to get rid of box springs, mattresses, boxes, and garbage cans full of trash that trash people actually came down and picked up, six full garbage containers of glass, broken debris, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, so, I just want the road open to me and.
Thank you. We'll have staff to get with you. It's Kim. She sat in the hall. Okay, John, thank you. No other items to come before us. We adjourn. Thank you so much.